People to take their seats please and we'll get the meeting underway. We are at nine thirty so I'm keen to start on time and stay on time today. So this is the continuation of the meeting that we started on Friday, which we adjourned on Friday. We've got a number of submitters that we're hearing from today. We've got five minutes for organisations and three minutes for individuals. And we start this morning with David Hawke from the Halswell Residents' Association. David, thank you for joining us. Please take a seat at the table and we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor and I think Chairman for today. So I'm David Hawke, Secretary, Halswell Residents' Association and thank you for the opportunity to talk with you today. Usually I'd have our chairman, John Bennett, sitting next to me but the timeline was pretty tight and I think you know about timelines. We recognise the situation as a city that we've suddenly found ourselves in and obviously it's not an easy situation. On the scale of things, we reiterate the points that we made in our submission for the initial version of the draft plan, which seems a long time ago now. But I guess we're disappointed at the removal from funding of a large number of capital projects. For us, particularly those relating to building community connectedness and livability. So public transport, major cycle routes, parks and reserves. But actually the big question for us is actually not this year's plan but next year's plan. And that brings us to the question of consultation, which we highlighted also in our initial submission. In an email that this time last week, which already seems a long time ago. You said quote that we are planning a more in-depth conversation with our communities about our capital programme unquote for the long-term plan next year. We note in our original submission that participation in consultations and in voting across our city don't actually presently represent well the diversity of the city. We also have the issue that many people don't know what the city council does or how to engage with it. On the other hand, there's really good social sciences evidence that people actually do have an interest in the city and they do have an interest in the political process. But people need to be convinced that consultation is real and not just a rubber stamp of decisions already made. One of the things that we really highlight is that city council, this city council, is capable of running meaningful consultations. So share an idea, a decade ago now, and more recently for us in Halswell, the skate park consultation. Those consultations, I think they worked really well, but they actually both had in common genuinely asking people for their ideas. And given the timeline to the long-term plan, this actually needs to start now. So if you're going to have this more in-depth conversation with your communities about the capital programme. We think that this is no free lunch, you're going to need some money to do this. So one of the requests or suggestions, you're going to get lots of requests I'm sure. That you include budget for long-term plan consultation in your final annual plan. And as a postscript, I'd really highlight that city council doesn't need to do all this on its own. There are lots of civil society groups of all sorts who bring together one way or another an enormous diversity of people. And you can harness these, but just to remind you, you will need to get organised. So thank you very much for listening. Very short talk, but I think the message is pretty clear.
Thank you. So we move to questions. Are there any questions for David? Yeah.
Thanks David. Thanks again for concise and excellent submission. Just thinking about yours, what you were saying about how we harness different groups and bring them together. Can you give us an example of seeing something really effective apart from the ones that you've given? And perhaps other countries or throughout, you know, that we could work on.
I'm going to try and make this not sound like a Patsy session. But councillor Galloway runs a community forum in our, in our community. And that brings together people of a very wide range of age groups and ethnicities. I'm trying not to make this sound like a Patsy. But I think that's a really good model. If I look across the community boards sprayed in cashmere, if I'm going to pick someone up. They are really good at taking their meetings into the community rather than waiting for the community to come to them. I think that's another really good example of that. And, and I think for community boards have got a really important role in this as well. And they need to be out there and, and hearing what their communities are saying in their communities. And giving them the chance to stamp their hands and wave, sorry, stamp their feet and wave their hands.
Great. Thank you very much. Now that brings us to the end of the time that we've got this morning. But David, thank you very much indeed for the work that you're doing in your community and for coming along and speaking to us this morning. Thank you.
Thanks for listening.
Thanks very much. So next we move to our second submitter, Margaret McFederies from the Papanui Baptist Freedom Trust. Good morning and welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Kia ora and thank you Deputy Mayor. I'm representing the Papanui Baptist Community Services Freedom Trust. And I'm speaking on behalf of our chairperson, Don Jalliman. I'm a board member, a program volunteer and a consumer. Thank you for the opportunity to make an oral submission on this updated draft annual plan. The Freedom Trust Board deeply appreciates the concern expressed by the mayor and chief executive on behalf of the council for the people of Christchurch as we come to terms with the ongoing impact of COVID-19 on economic and social issues and our community's mental health and wellbeing. Thank you for giving serious consideration to a zero percent increase to rates for the 2021 year and providing the citizens of Christchurch with an extensive evidence-based rationale to support your current proposal of a 3.5 increase. We appreciate the organisational and personal sacrifices that will have occurred to revise the original draft and update it in a time-constrained manner. We're aware that the council is presently faced with difficult financial decisions. Therefore, it was particularly gratifying to read that the council is considering whether to provide a one-off 5% boost to the strengthening communities fund to acknowledge the challenges faced by organisations as a result of COVID-19 crisis and the level four lockdown. As a trust involved in diverse community activities, food bank deliveries, community social events, mainly music for preschoolers, schoolchildren's breakfasts and other programmes for adults. We're very aware of many of the existing and increasing needs within our Papanui Inus area. Faced with the economic and social uncertainties resulting from the COVID-19 crisis. We anticipate an increased level of support will be needed by many members of our community. However, while we anticipate an increased level of need, we are very concerned by the likelihood of less funding being available from many of the usual sources of support. Community trusts and other community service organisations are largely reliant upon external funding from sources like the city council strengthening community funds. We understand that the Christchurch City Council is one of the few councils that has such a financial commitment to community organisations. We believe that the local community trusts and other community agencies provide some of the most effective means of support to communities. Not only are such organisations directly involved with addressing community needs, but they're able to mobilise volunteer workers to assist, thus multiplying the effectiveness of any financial investment. And for example, although our trust has a single community worker, the combined contribution of nearly fifty regular volunteers over 4,826 hours per year is equivalent to an additional 2.5 FTE. Small organisations may lack some of the advantages of larger organisations, but they have an agility to respond to crises and unexpected situations in a timely, effective manner. The Freedom Trust has been working in the Papanui Inus area for 25 years and has built long-term relationships with consumers and providers of social services. We've seen how activities provided in warm, respectful and supportive ways develop resilience and empower people to become contributors themselves. They are no longer limited to a survival mode of living. Instead, they gain practical and social skills and increase in life wisdom. A number of our program attendees have gone on to become volunteers themselves, investing back into the community. We work collaboratively with other organisations in our area, for example, the North West Collective, the Northgate Trust, Northgate stakeholders. We believe in networking widely and that the sum of the whole is greater than the sum of the individual parts. The Papanui Community Voices Survey conducted in 2018 by the Freedom and Northgate Trusts identified loneliness and isolation as the greatest needs experienced in our community. These issues have been compounded by the COVID-19 and level four lockdown period and we want to be responsive to new opportunities that presenting in our communities. The availability of some additional funding would be greatly appreciated. As a trust, we wish to strongly endorse the council's consideration of a one-off increase to the strengthening communities fund. The 0.07% increase would add to the rates for the next funding year but would be a sound investment in the wellbeing of our communities. Ma te manaakitanga tato e kōkiri fa kā moa. We will get through this together. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. And that was perfectly timed for the five minutes that we had available. Doesn't unfortunately allow time for questions, but thank you very much indeed for your submission this morning. Thanks very much. So next we've got Brian Donovan from the New Brighton Residents' Association. Good morning. Welcome to the table. Thank you very much indeed for joining us.
Yeah, thank you. Just before you start the clock actually. I will refer to the previous or the Halswell Residents' Association, I agree with their venture which is to take the meetings of residents associations from, you know, just rooms out into the public forum. So congratulate them on that and that's exactly what we're planning to do. Instead of waiting for people to come to us, we'll be looking to go to them. So that's the new way forward. All right. Thanks council and councillors, mayor and, you know, for listening to us today. So I, as you know, I represent the New Brighton Residents' Association or NIBRA, covering the central area of this great seaside suburb. And we are technically saltier than the Central City Business Association, but I'll come back to that. So let's start with the proposed rates level. We agree that it should not be zero. Our limited surveys have shown the vast majority of east side ratepayers and residents have expressed far more dissatisfaction with the state of our services, including water roads, footpaths and state of mall than rates. The prospect of haipuna timoana hot pools could have been one of the casualties of cutbacks was definitely unpalatable to local residents and retailers. Anyway, that debate is now academic, but the New Brighton Residents' Association believes whatever the rates level the council determines, some focus should be directed to those who are struggling to minimise effects. For instance, not imposing penalties for late payment would be a good start. The coastal Berwood Community Board correctly submits, the gateway to New Brighton is spoilt by the poor state of the connecting roads and bridges and wants planned works around both, particularly the Pages Road Link, brought forward rather than put back. One of the biggest ratepayer concerns is the maintenance levels in central New Brighton. It has been poorly served for a number of years around the street cleanliness, general tidiness around the foreshore and playground. And actually wants to see an increase in the funding in this area or more attention to this area. If New Brighton is clean, it leaves a huge impression on visitors. Other projects being pushed by the community board include the repair of the Senatau Memorial Steps. And NIBRA believes this part of the foreshore warrants an investigation into a sound shell for outdoor musical fest. Giving protection from the Easterly, it is currently the finishing line to the coast to coast. And a sound shell would give this and other events like the Surf Champs permanent cover for prize giving speeches etcetera. An upgrade here would complete the southern end of the exciting foreshore extending from the rebuilt million dollar New Brighton Surf Club south along the ocean fringe of the pedestrian-only marine parade upgrade and follow through the hot pools, playground, pier, library and the clock tower etcetera. New Brighton has a massive recreational visitor potential and the signs are already evident of revitalisation due to local and council initiatives. Sadly, looking across the road from the foreshore is the remnants of a once bustling retail catchment declining unabated over the last 30 years. Why does the New Brighton Residents' Association care about the business core? Because it impacts on residents for a multitude of reasons as a number one festering sore from our research. The mall has been the responsibility of Development Christchurch Limited since 2015 and we can see the result. The residents agree with the community board asking for the council to look into the development contribution relief for suburban commercial centres, namely the New Brighton Mall. This is just one step enticing developers on board. The committee board wants the New Brighton Public Realm funding brought into the annual plan for the city with priority given to the Orem Ave extension. This action has been neglected since being identified as a key part of the mall revival since 2015 and overlooked year after year since. There are a number of significant benefits for the mall around this move and will encourage investments along the north-south orientation and mark the western border of a compressed area, retail area. The New Brighton Residents' Association agrees with Mayor Leanne Dalzell's apt comment, I think it was just used previously. The sum of the whole is greater than sum of the parts. The whole in this case is not the mall as you might think. But the whole salt concept alluded to by Mike Pukaski and the Central City Business Group. This inner city template can be applied to New Brighton as its strategic hyper-local focus is what we need. The key being the replacement of DCL with a locally driven charitable trust charged with stimulating a rebirth of the mall. The shrinking of the mall as a result of the Orem Ave extension will give the mall four distinct boundaries within which salt principles can be applied and a spicy flavour unique to New Brighton. We have the people, we have the passion, the perseverance in New Brighton, but unlike CCBA, don't have the resources or money. And if 500,000 is peanuts, as Mike said in his very good submission, we will have some of those peanuts please. New Brighton understands the need for financial austerity, but not austerity around progression and ideas. Thank you.
And once again, that filled the five minutes available perfectly, but thanks for a comprehensive and quite visionary submission. Thanks very much indeed.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next we've got Mike Slay from Sumner Village Park. Mike, good morning. Thank you for joining us. Welcome to the table.
Thank you. Yep. Good morning everybody. Worship the mayor, the chairman, the councillors. Thank you for this opportunity to talk to our submission. I think the last time we were here was about three years ago. I don't think we ever thought we'd be back, but maybe that's what COVID does. Really the core of why we're here is that there was money to build the long-awaited skate park in the budget. And then that was removed. But we've been advised from council staff that there is in fact 95,000 of operational funding separately available for this year and that the 418,000 would be delayed by only one year to 2022. But we haven't been able to get actually any confirmation of that either. Because other people tell us that 2022 onwards is all up for grabs in the future. So if that is the case and we can't, and what they've advised us isn't correct, then we would be back to our original submission of asking for that construction money to be available in the current annual plan. Just as a bit of a heads up, we have got community support for it as strong and widespread as ever. We've got a catchment of about 15,000 people, so it's a reasonable catchment. Everyone's been waiting for this. They've been waiting 31 years, which I heard on the radio today, there was concerns about Bromley, which is odour, which is terrible. And then I thought, oh, that's 10 years, but we've been waiting 31 years. It's sort of, in that same period, we've seen the council's built 14 skate parks throughout the rest of Christchurch, but nothing out on the coastal area. So we're really keen to just get it sorted and get on with it. And even if that means even potentially transferring money from some other projects or, you know, just part of their funding or some whatever it may be, you know, the Avon River Corridor or something where we could just take a small, have a small transfer and get this underway. We have, prior to this issue, had really good progress with the council staff. They've been really professional. And we've had really good involvement from youth and 100 young people came to the last design consultation session. That's reasonably unheard of in these things. The Minister Megan Woods actually came down last year to announce the transfer of land to help make it happen as well. And the chairman was there, remember it? And, and that really got nationwide coverage because I think it was really, it's a story about recovery and what you can do for other parts of the community. Because I suppose one of the issues and it's really just the same as we're seeing globally about things like Black Lives Matter, it's about giving people a voice. And so there's a huge number of children in this area and they haven't had really anything since the earthquakes. And in fact, they've just, you know, they've lost amenities if anything. And I know the council strategy says that you want to give voice to children. Well, here is a perfect opportunity because you're not going to see adults using it and it's been an ongoing demand. And I know you're in a hurry, but even the way this was consulted, I can't imagine any child was going to find out about the updated annual plan or know what to do about it. So yeah, so that's quite significant. Obviously, I've just touched on sort of recent stuff about the benefits of skate parks, the mental health of children, youth. I think one of the biggest single takeout there is that all the traditional sports that we grew up with, team sports like rugby, cricket, hockey, they're all declining quite rapidly amongst young people, cricket being the biggest one. It's halved in the last 20 years participation. But there's been a growth in things like skateboarding, things where you can do it yours individually. But we, as a community, we really haven't kept up with those changes in terms of providing the right assets, you know. We haven't removed rugby parks as rugby falls, use that money to build skate parks or whatever else we need. It will also be a great help to the local community business. Because they're struggling there in Sumner like anywhere else. But I think it's really important for you, this is a Bays area thing. This stretches from Ferrymead to Brookhaven to Heathcote right out to Sumner and Reclus. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now that leaves time for just one question, if there is one. Pauline.
Forgive me for not knowing this, but what's the cost of the proposed skate park, do you know?
Well, we're still working through a process, but there had been funding provided of 418,000 and we're confident that's pretty likely to be it. And we've seen other skate parks built. They've built Turnhornsfall recently and I think they're about 380,000. Yeah, so we're confident we can do it, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks very much indeed for the submission. And we've got people making notes as we hear from submitters, so we certainly will pick up the matters that you've raised.
Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Thank you. So next we move to Charlotte Hudson. Charlotte, thank you for joining us. Welcome to the table. So next we move to Charlotte Hudson. Charlotte, thank you for joining us. Welcome to the table.
Good morning. My name is Charlie Hudson, and I'm the Chair of the Sumner Green and Skate Team. We've already heard from Mike. And my deputation is around supporting the design and the funding for the Village Green project, which goes hand-in-hand with the skate park. I'd like to begin by thanking Honourable Megan Woods, Ruth Dyson, Christchurch City Council Parks Team Councillor Sarah Templeton, and the Lynwood Heathcote Community Board for their ongoing support that we've had with both of these projects. Sumner Green and Skate are asking for the Village Green project to be included as part of the Capital Works Programme in the annual plan or consideration of the long-term plan. The land, which is at 2024 Nailan Street, is adjacent to the previously redsooned land that has been designated for the Bays Area Skate Project at 26 Nailan Street. As Mike mentioned, it was acknowledged by Minister Woods for a Village Green in February 2019. And the community feels that the creation of the green in combination with the skate and scooter park, it lessens the impact of a single-use zone in the centre of the village, and it creates a multi-use area that the whole community can enjoy. And this was based on, this model was kind of based on the really popular transitional village skate and green area that we had from 2012 to 2017. Christchurch City Council Parks Team, guided by the project manager, Marty McCullum, she's created a draft design for the green with the skate area as well. And we'd like to ask resource for both projects to proceed together. And the advantages of this means that we can have a cohesive design. We can maximise the land use and the community interaction. It gives us the ability to combine both consultations together for the community. It's that there'll be a reduction of cost for the Village Green consultation, the Village Green build, if they're integrated together. And it gives us, you know, a successful kind of communal heart to our village. Touching on the funding, we were looking in the annual plan, and there is some funding allocated under the original Sumner Master Plan for the Burgess Street Shared Space and Viewing Platform, that's number 34266. And we feel the Village Green offers a more successful community shared space, and we'd like to have the consideration for the funds to be reallocated as a community shared space to the creation of the Village Green. And then, community fundraising can also support this project once it has some design and it is confirmed on the works programme. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a question? Sarah.
So just to be clear, you're not asking for any new funding, just reallocation of existing funding from a different project?
That's right.
Great. Thank you very much indeed for the submission. Very clear. Thanks very much indeed. John Bradbrook. John, welcome. Thanks for joining us this morning.
Okay, thank you. My name's John Bradbrook, and I live in the Bromley community. We've had ongoing, my reason I'm here today is only for the health and safety of the residents of Christchurch. It has to do with glyphosate and the use of it in New Zealand, and especially the Christchurch City Council. And I have some questions about this, which I'll ask you later. I've been involved with health and safety, especially through New Zealand from way back. I was heavily involved in getting rid of asbestos in New Zealand, and that's cost the Christchurch City Council a huge amount of money. I was conscripted into the army when they started using Agent Orange. We've received, we know what the result of that was. What were the others? Bromley Community Centre. The Bromley area was contaminated, and some children ended up in hospital in that area. And we found out that soil was contaminated. That contamination, when the earthquakes happened, cost me thirteen and a half thousand dollars of my own money to get rid of that soil. But the main reason I'm here is concerning glyphosate. And I'm only going to read you a couple of pieces out of this thing. Bayer is facing eighteen thousand four hundred glyphosate cases in the United States. Monsanto was hit with a historic two-billion verdict losing its third straight test of Roundup trials because of calogs have pulled out using Roundup. And we'll come now to the Christchurch City Council. And here, this is a piece of paper which has stated that glyphosate is a carcinogenic and causes health to the community. It says, where is glyphosate banned? And we come to New Zealand. And I said it was banned by the Christchurch City Council. I want to know why it was banned then and why you want to go back to it. That's one part of it. The other part is that there is over forty countries that have banned or put partial bans on this product. One of the countries is Germany, and Germany has put a ban on it, yet Bayer owns the company that makes it now. And they paid two and a half billion dollars, or so many billion dollars, don't quote me on that, to get hold of this company. So now I just come to some questions. Why does the city council think it's safe to go back using this? Is it about money, or is it about the health of the Christchurch people? I'll just read you one small part of this.
We have come to the end of the three minutes set aside for the submission. We've got a copy of your written submission, which has been made available to all of the councillors. And we've got people making notes, and I don't doubt that some of the matters you've raised will be of interest as we consider the issue in our deliberations after the hearings. But we have just got a relatively short time set aside for each person this morning.
Can I leave you with this document, please?
Yep, absolutely. If we can have one of our staff take the document, and we can get that circulated. Thank you very much indeed for your time and a very clear submission this morning. Thank you. Thanks very much. So now, our next submitter, I'd invite Ants Field to the table.
Ants, good morning. Thanks for joining us. Good morning, everyone. Thank you. Firstly, I'd like to congratulate Christchurch City Council on its excellent cycleway network. The majority of my trips in Christchurch are by bike, and I biked here today. Congratulations also on the hard work rejigging the annual plan for the Covid-19 emergency. What I want to talk about this morning is the climate emergency. Great that the Christchurch City Council declared a climate emergency. However, I've yet to see or hear about any bold action. It is now thirteen months since the Christchurch City Council declared a climate and ecological emergency. Please think bold. Please act bold. We need to pick the low-hanging fruit. Christchurch City Council must be planning now for the climate emergency. That's the core of my submission. If you have any questions, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. So there is time for questions. Sarah.
What is it you would like us to do in our annual and long-term plans to help address it?
Yeah, I have a science degree. The science is really clear around climate change. I'm not an expert in planning, but I know that you guys have a lot of really good people working in this building. I think there should be as much, precious is the wrong word, but emphasis on climate change. Because, yes, we're in a Covid-19 emergency now, and it's great that you guys are flexible and rejigging things for the Covid-19 emergency, but the climate change emergency carries on. We need to be acting as much as possible, and this should really be the bottom line in every decision. Because the longer we don't do anything, the worse it gets. We're a low-lying coastal city. There's a lot of problems coming.
Okay, one further quick question from James.
Kia ora, Ants. You're a cyclist. I'm interested to know what your thoughts are on our cycling infrastructure.
Kia ora, that's a really good question. I really love it. I know I have some friends who are cyclists who whinge about little details. And there's always little details, but the fact that you guys are seriously funding cycling is fantastic. And we need to get people out of cars, we need to shut down the airport. I mean, these are radical things, but over time, that will make sense. We've just got to change the way we live. I don't want to go back to mud huts, for sure. We don't need that. We have technological solutions, but we need to be focusing every day on the climate emergency.
Okay, thank you. Ants, thanks very much indeed for coming to join us this morning and for your submission. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
So now I would call Duncan Webb, the Member of Parliament for Christchurch Central, to the table. Duncan, good morning. Thanks for joining us.
Kia ora, the Premier. Inana, inero, inoiwi. Inora rangatira ma. Tienakoto, tienakoto, tienakoto kata. And thank you very much for indulging me. I've been a difficult, a bit of a last-minute change of plans, and thank you for granting me a little extra time. And I just want to mark the gravity of the work that you councillors, this council is doing. It's an extremely difficult task. But I also want to express a real disappointment that the currently preferred option sees this city at this time standing still. The idea that in the current climate, what is essentially an inflation-adjusted rates levy will have huge impact on this city. And this is at a time when we know, all of our advice tells us that we're in an economic situation that we haven't seen for 160 years. The government has set aside and spent a large part of fifty billion dollars to support employment and to support our people. And that, the basis of the fundamental of my submission is that the city needs to get in that wacker and paddle in time. Because if we go down the path which is the preferred proposal, we will see a huge economic disruption for Christchurch that we will not recover from for decades to come. The hundred and sixty-four, I think, million-dollar cut in your capital programme is a real dagger to the heart of Christchurch. And it's not enough to say that we'll do it later. That is a programme that will never be caught up. And it's not just about the spending of money. Every million dollars spent has a compounding effect on jobs. And we can't expect our businesses to get up and running if this council is going to cost this city thousands of jobs. Not just the builders and the contractors who do that construction work, but the professional services who feed off that, and the cafes and service industries that feed off those. So that is a massive jobs, effective massive jobs cut. And look, I want to applaud the council for its increase in strengthening the Strengthening Communities Fund. That's exactly the right strategy. But given what's going on with community funding right now, that needs to be much greater. We need to be, we know that there's going to be fallout from the economic effects of Covid. This council is in a position that no other organisation in Christchurch is, to support the social services and the communities out there. And there are some fantastic projects that are planned. I know the Stanmore Village project is one, we're in a much-needed community. They're the kind of projects that money should be spent on, on vulnerable communities, so that we can support them through this. And I know, I can see already, there's a couple of people who want to answer questions. And I'll just make a couple more points, and I'll finish before my time. The water levy, I agree that usage, discipline and usage is a good thing. But an allowance which is based on the value of the property owned is a regressive approach. That framework is not fit for purpose, and it should not be used at the present time. I absolutely accept that any rate increase causes hardship for some, but not all. So let's not give everyone a free ride at this time of crisis. Let's make sure our assistance is targeted to those who need it. So, and absolutely, I understand that business is critical. And the council is in a position to lead that. And it's got a great economic development unit in Christchurch NZ. That's where we should be looking to make sure that, at this time, when other businesses are struggling, the city can step up, fill the gap, and make sure Christchurch is resilient and prepared for the recovery that comes. I've got a submission that I'll provide later, which has a lot more detail in it. But really, this city is in a position to borrow money and to spend money in a way that no other organisation at a local level is. That's what we should be doing now, not a nineteen-eighties-style austerity programme which will damage families, people, jobs, and the cities for years to come. Kia ora.
So Duncan, you're suggesting some disappointment at our proposed 3.5% rates increase. In terms of the options in the consultation document, or, you know, your own views, what rates increase would you have us pursue?
My submission does point that out, and I should have said, option three, which is the originally planned increase, I understand. But I would supplement that with saying, if we went down that road with the adjustments to the borrowing programme, increased spending would be possible, and that would be my preferred approach.
Thank you. Now, I've got some people indicating questions. I've got Sam, Sarah, Leanne and Mike. Sam.
Great. Hey, thank you, Duncan, for coming. I actually, I read your submission and was impressed with your passion. In terms of the capital programme, so obviously, you'll be aware that in the past, the challenge has been, we can't deliver it. So this is actually refining it. I mean, my view would be, it should be less. But this is refining it to a point where it's achievable. I just wondered, you know, you've talked about the need for employment and that, where the shovel-ready projects are, because we've put a lot of projects in for that, which actually wouldn't cost the rate payer if we picked up on the tax front. I thought, as a member of sort of the government, where that's at?
I'll make a few comments there. Firstly, I'm presenting as the MP for Christchurch Central, not as a government, not as a minister of government, so I speak passionately as a Christchurch-centric MP. In terms of your suggestion that we never spend it, so let's defer it, that's an utter illusion. The fact is, there's a carryover every year, and we pick it up. But if we cut our capital programme, if we cut our capital programme now, it's a cut forever, and it will never be picked up. And in respect of your third point, unfortunately, I don't hold the pin on applications to Treasury. But I will say this, I find it, I'm flabbergasted that council proposes to cut its own capital programme and then stick its hand out to government to give it more funds, to make up the shortfall. If we're going to do this, let's do it together. Let's not, let's not, this organisation stop spending while it expects to get the largesse of government and more spending. Now, I'm not saying that the city won't and shouldn't. I hope, and I am advocating for those capital programmes. There's some fantastic projects in there and much-needed spending, but let's do it together. Let's not swim in opposite directions.
Okay, so we don't know when that's coming. That's fine. Thank you.
Yeah, and certainly bearing in mind that what we're talking about here are deferrals rather than cuts. And a lot of what you're suggesting certainly will come into play for discussion as part of the LTP development. And obviously, you're putting a particular view on the table today around the annual plan as well. Next question from Sarah.
Thank you. You've been very clear on the capital spend. I'm just wondering if you had a view on the operational spend being that that has implications for procurement in other areas?
Yeah, look, I do have a view, but I'll be perfectly honest. I focused on capital spend largely because of the time that was available to me to look at. I am concerned that operational spending has a similar impact. If we reduce operational spending, it has, whilst it doesn't give us infrastructure, it does still have jobs implications, but I don't really want to, I haven't honestly had enough time to look at that in detail.
Thank you. Leanne, and then if we've got time, I've got Mike and Tim. Leanne.
Have you worked through the reality that a city council can only gather its income from the capital value of people's properties? Central government has the advantage of being able to spread it across its, or its expenditure across its income, which are always based on ability to pay, either your income or your consumer tax, GST. So it's a completely different environment for local government. And do you see that perhaps in that context, there's a better role for a partnership approach around a co-spend? I wouldn't get too excited about carryfords, because all carryfords are, is moving the year in which the expenditure is earned. If we cannot physically do more than four hundred million dollars worth of capital programmes, there is no point putting more money on the budget.
Yeah, look, I understand how rates work, and I understand how taxes work, yeah? Absolutely understand that the city's capital programme is based on a value-based levy on properties. And there certainly is, there's a philosophical discussion to be had around that, but I don't accept...
And tax on top of that.
And I don't, but I don't accept your suggestion that carryfords are meaningless. They're not. We've got a carryford this year from last year. It's part of the wider spend. And so we need to be... And so we need to be absolutely committing funds now and we know about the kind of pipeline effect as well. We need those jobs in the pipeline so that we have certainty and continuity and not cutting 160-odd million dollars of the capital, capital programme.
It's, it's a question of delivery, but yeah.
All right. Thank you. Now, that Duncan brings us to the end of the, the time available. I will do what I was doing on Friday and try and apportion questions as fairly as possible among councillors, realising that we are time constrained. So I'm keeping notes of who's asked questions.
Thank you, councillors. I really appreciate this opportunity.
Duncan, thank you very much indeed for joining us this morning. Thank you. Okay, our next submitters are Megan Rolston and Simon Watt from the South Shore Residents' Association. And there's a written submission available on the hub for this one as well. So Megan and Simon, thank you very much indeed for joining us. And Tim, thank you for joining us as well. Good to see you. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, councillors, thank you for the opportunity to speak to our submission. I'm Megan Rolston, it's Simon Watts and Tim Sinters, I'm sure you recognise. We're representing the South Shore Residents' Association. We will take our written submission as read and given that we've only got five minutes to speak, we would like to allow some time for questions. So whilst our submission had three primary concerns, seeking funding for the Estrie Edge earthquake repair project, the state of our roads and footpaths and opposing the water usage charge based on capital value, we will just speak today on the Estrie Edge earthquake repair project. South Shore Residents' Association were alarmed and disappointed again to discover that there is no funding under the draft annual plan for our Estrie Edge earthquake repair, especially given the 2019 council resolution numbered C N C L 2019 00196, which clearly states in 6C that funding be made available for the implementation of the Estrie Edge earthquake legacy repair in 2020 and urgently prioritised. Our written submission has a copy of that resolution. To delay funding to the long-term plan has significant knock-on effects to the commencement of work and continues to undermine the mental and social wellbeing of our community. Nine years. Nine years is too long to wait. Whilst we understand the difficult financial position COVID-19 places us all in, the recovery from COVID must not take precedence over earthquake recovery. Our project is shovel-ready. Enough is enough. Please do the right thing. Honour the council resolution and provide funding for this essential earthquake repair work. Thank you. We've got time for questions.
Thank you. Questions? Yanni.
Thank you. Just wanted to check if you've been given a reason why the resolution hasn't been carried through. And I guess just to let you know, it's not just you. There's a number of resolutions that have not come back as part of this annual plan that were expected for other communities as well.
No, we've not been provided a reason. And it actually brings up an interesting question that who actually champions these projects to request funding?
No argument from me. But I just, I just wondered whether the COVID-19, you'd been told that it was because of the COVID-19 issue?
We've not been given any particular reason. We were quite shocked by no funding in the plan.
All right. Thank you. Aaron.
It's just for you, Mr Chair. On issues like this that get raised, if we could, or even for the CEO, if we could get a memo back around us and the submitter as to why, like if they don't know and we don't know, if we could find out when they are raised during the process.
Yeah, it's a good point. We've got people making notes on all of these submissions and, you know, we need to make sure that we're responding correctly.
Yeah, these ones kind of call for an action to let them and us know.
Indeed. Thank you. Any further questions? James.
Kiora toru. You'll know, Megan, that I rang you when this was, this was raised at the community board meeting last week. It was a surprise to me to answer your question, who champions these resolutions? To be frank, as a first-term councillor, I thought that it was just natural that these things flowed. I was here in August when that resolution was passed. So that prompted us last Monday to follow through. And there has been a response from, through the office of the chief executive and I've hinted at that. But we have to wait until it goes through some process before it can be forwarded on to you. But it hasn't been ignored, is what, is bottom line what I'm saying. It just doesn't look like anything's happening.
Yeah, there's clearly some information we need to get back.
Yes. So there will be more information for you. Okay.
Thank you. One quick question from Melanie.
So it's about the water charging. And I quite like what you've put there about everyone paying the same, sorry, everyone getting the same amount of water allocated to their house before they pay for extra. I was wondering if you agreed that around the 912 litres was a good amount to then charge excess?
We talked about, I'll let Simon answer that.
We, we thought about this. We didn't necessarily think it was our role to make a suggestion on amount, but looking at the information we had, it seemed it wasn't unreasonable.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much indeed for the submission this morning. Clearly you've raised some issues that we, we need to get some information on. But thank you very much indeed for coming along and raising that this morning. Thank you. Our next submitter is Susan Carbine. Susan, thank you for coming along. Welcome to the table. Thank you.
Tienakoto. My name's Sue Carbine. So I'm a resident of South Shore. It's very disheartening to not see any funds allocated to the South Shore earthquake project in the annual 2021 plan. The effect of the nine-year delays has had a bad knock-on effect in the community. Many people have not been able to repair or rebuild earthquake-damaged houses until work on the Estrie Edge protection goes ahead. It's well-known that the fight-and-flight response attacks our immune system and anxiety depresses our immune system. The promise from the last council to add funding into the annual plan 2021 has not been honoured. Council, you take over the red zone on the 1st of July 2020 and you take over responsibility and liability as a good neighbour. For example, responsibility for runoff of stormwater from what would be your land onto your neighbour's land or the street. On the basis of community wellbeing, for which you have responsibility and on the basis that you are now my neighbours, can I ask you to make a clear directive for allocating adequate funding for the South Shore earthquake legacy project in the annual plan 2021? Any questions?
Thank you. Are there questions? No questions? All right. Thank you very much indeed for your very clear submission. Thanks very much indeed for joining us this morning. Thank you. So next, we have Jessica Halliday from the Teputahui Trust. Jessica, thanks for joining us this morning.
Kiora kato. We would like to congratulate, congratulate the council on revising the annual plan in the context of COVID-19 and ongoing uncertainty. And thank you for the opportunity to comment and be heard. So Teputahui Centre for Architecture and City Making is an independent, non-profit organisation. We want to make it easy, desirable and fun for everybody to participate in the shaping and enjoyment of Ortahtahui Christchurch. Festa was our founding event and has been a key event for us since 2012. We've also partnered with council on a range of projects and events such as Christchurch Conversations and our current programme of central neighbourhood walks. We also appreciate council, past council grants that have enabled other projects to proceed, including Festa, Almari Architecture Tour and Open Christchurch 2019. Last year, we were particularly proud of the collaboration with Yo-Yo Ma, Rekindle and Nahtahu. It was an electrifying process delivering an event on the banks of the Otaqaro within three weeks from concept to live event. In terms of specific aspects of the annual plan, we support the boost to strengthening communities funding, support continued heritage funding and the continuation of the Heritage Festival, support the ongoing funding of gap filler, life and vacant spaces in the Green Lab and the wider In Live In Places programme, support council's social procurement processes, support the continuation of the Innovation and Sustainability Fund at the same level. We very much support council's strategic priority of meeting the challenge of climate change through every means possible. And this fund allows council to support third sector organisations and communities to contribute meaningfully to that goal. It is vital that as a city, we continue to progress and expand our work on climate action. Teputahui has an ongoing commitment to city conversations and community engagement on climate action in new ways and we'd be keen to partner with council on this in the future. To that end, we also support council's ongoing investment in cycleways and improvement to footpaths and safe walking routes, a major way to address the 53% of the city's greenhouse gas emissions that come from transport. Just to briefly note, Teputahui started the year focused on presenting Festa 2020 at Labour Weekend. Sadly, due to COVID-19, we have made the decision not to proceed with the event. It's been a very difficult decision to say farewell to our signature event, one that has been significant in people's relationship with the central city after the earthquakes. We have also valued our partnership with council and other partners on Christchurch Conversations. In 2019, presenting conversations with Helen Clark, Bill Reid and Antri Akom. We recognise the context has changed in many ways. However, conversations to inspire and challenge us to think differently about the city's future remain crucial. A city conversation about what we value, how we want or even need to live here in this place is critical at this time to address strategic priorities and as you lead into the long-term plan. So in summary, we're here and we care deeply about the future of the city. Teputahui will continue to shape our programme to the changing context and we're open to new opportunities and partnerships. We have a unique ability to bring the widest variety of voices together to discuss, debate and progress city making. This is because we're a trusted partner who can offer independent, strong collaboration, established networks, adaptability expertise and a commitment to inclusion. We look forward to continuing to work with the council and a range of partners to grow knowledge, motivation, conversation, engagement and participation in city making, so that Christchurch is truly a place where people and the city thrive together. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Jimmy.
Question particularly emphasised the Heritage Festival, the funding has been cut. And also regarding to the city conversation, the funding also will be cut. Those will impact the operational costs. So what is your recommendation? Is increase the rates or is increase borrowing can meet the needs?
No, we cancelled the festival because it's not possible to present it. It wasn't about not having confidence in council's festival and events funding. It's because it was logistically impossible to invite a couple of hundred architecture and design students from Australia and New Zealand to fly here in October. And as an organisation, we wouldn't, as we're not a rate-paying organisation, although it's run and governed by ratepayers, we wouldn't comment. We don't think, consider it appropriate for us to comment directly on rates.
Thank you. So thank you for joining us this morning. Thanks for the work you're doing and noting your offer to, unwillingness to, to partner, articulated a number of times in your submission. Thank you. Thank you. Our next submitter is Lee Robinson, representing the Robinsons Bay Ratepayers and Residents' Association and the Takamatu Ratepayers and Residents' Association. Lee, welcome to the table. Good to see you.
Thank you, councillors. Appreciate the opportunity. Look, I'll be brief. In 2011, 10/11, most of the wharves in the harbour were closed because of earthquake damage and lack of repair and maintenance. And there was a lot of work done by the communities in convincing council that these facilities were very necessary, not only for local use, but they were really community use for people travelling, day trips from Akeroa. And I think a lot of us spent time sending photographs to the, to the council organisation just showing just how these facilities were community-based and community-used. We had a fantastic working bee last year and Takamatu the year before. Where a public-private sort of arrangement was entered into. The council funded a lot of the hardware material. Takamatu Residents' Association had about 15 working bee days with their residents. The team was led by Paul Devlin, the council ranger, over weekends. And they restored their wharf with a contribution from the Takamatu Residents' Association in cash. And last year, we had 23 working bees from November 18 to September 19 on the wharf repairing and fixing up this lovely community facility. It's there now probably for another 100 years. It was a fantastic community project. People were enthusiastic about fronting up down there at all sorts of, in all sorts of weather. And we achieved an incredible project, really lifting five-metre beams in person down the wharf and dropping them into, dropping them into place and fixing this really great community asset. We have one further thing to do in respect to both wharves. They are a long way out of the ground at low tide. The community's indicated a wish to contribute to a floating pontoon. It's just a safety mechanism, not only for people getting off, on and off boats, but people who use the jetty need to get in and out of the water if they want to swim or fish. And for young children, it's, it's pretty essential that that safety platform, if you like, is installed. I'm sure we can raise some money to do that, but I just seek some funding from the council to complete the projects for these very worthwhile community facilities. I, I think the cost of a floating pontoon is somewhere between $20,000 and $30,000. And, and I know that the labour will be provided under supervision from someone like Paul Devlin and Kevin Simcock, who's an engineer from Takamatu, leads their association. So it would be again a public-private arrangement. It would be completed by working bees under engineering supervision. And it's just a matter of being able to fund this over the next year or two. So I'm grateful for the opportunity of making this submission.
Thank you. Sarah.
Thanks so much. I was just wondering if you approached the community board about potentially funding, funding over, over, over a couple of years?
We, we did for the wharf and we, we will do that again. We were just encouraged to make this submission in the first instance.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right. Well, thank you, Lee, for joining us this morning. Thanks for what clearly has been some successful community partnership work in getting those, getting wharf back to where it needs to be. And thanks for a very clear request this morning as well. Thank you. So now moving to our next submitter, Michael Reynolds from Roymata Food Comments. Good morning, Michael. Thanks for joining us to make your submission today.
Atamati everyone. Privilege and honour to be here. Really appreciate your time and making yourselves available to listen to community. The new COVID-19 challenge we are still dealing with continues to bring up a lot for me around how we build resilience into our communities. Community-level resilience is a complex and ever-changing beast, but I feel there are some opportunities for easy wins alongside opportunities for multi-generational projects. It is only when communities feel connected and have access to their basic human needs at the absolute minimum that a community can step into a future that builds their identity. An identity that reflects their shared values and wisdom, as well as being able to navigate challenging times in a way that leaves no man, woman or child behind. I believe it was Gandhi who said, "The true measure of any society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable members." For communities to flourish, every single member needs access to bumping points to meet, for healthy, access to healthy activities, beautiful spaces, green outdoor parks and gardens. I've been really interested in conversations that I am both an active part of and ones that I'm witnessing with some separation, particularly online, around food resilience. One of the biggest things that is coming out of this time is that we are, that we are experiencing is that in times of disruption, inequality is amplified. Those that have privilege have access. Those that don't, don't. The population of Ortahtahui is more food insecure than we realise. The number of emergency food parcels has increased markedly over the last three years, reaching over 1 million in Aotearoa. reaching over 1 million in Aotearoa in 2019. We are already over 700,000 from January through to May this year. And this only measures those in our communities who actually ask for help. Collectively, we spend a lot of time and energy thinking and talking about access to food over the last two months. The missing bit for me is not if the supermarket is open or not. It is more about how affordable, accessible food is for everyone in our city, especially healthy, locally grown food. I believe we can do much better. The current food system is letting people down. Many of our most vulnerable citizens are slipping through the support systems that are struggling to keep up. There are two things that I think we can do better here. Firstly, we need to make it a lot easier for community groups to grow food in public spaces. I know not all public land should be for food production. Not is all public land suitable. However, for a project such as Roymata Food Commons, there is a stated desire by our group to produce as much free nourishing food with our community as we can. There is also a building practice of vulnerable local citizens using it as a vital source of nourishment. Many times during the COVID experience, when I was down in the park maintaining the space, people were coming to me saying, "I've got no food, I've got no money left for food this week. What is there available?" And I don't think that's acceptable. There should be more flexibility to respond to what the community needs over time. Allow the community groups that have the capacity and passion to be responsive to their communities and empower them to act. Secondly, we need to value leadership in our communities more than we currently do. The not-for-profit community development support sector has been struggling with resourcing leadership capacity for a long time. The current focus on funding projects creates a situation where community leaders need to keep creating more projects in order to attract the financial resource to support them and their whanau. We are asking people to give more and more of themselves just to keep their heads above water. Social entrepreneurialism will not solve this issue. It is a commercialisation of community development. It distracts our community leaders from their core purpose, having to run businesses instead of holding space for support and care of their communities. Living with a virtue of service requires trust, care and faith to support it. Social entrepreneurship will not encourage the cultural and social transformation we so desperately need. Showing trust and faith in the leaders in our communities will be a moment of transformation in itself. In summary, this is what I ask to be considered as part of the CCC annual plan. One, I wholeheartedly ask for the Christchurch City Council to be the inspirational leader that our people need by supporting those in our communities that willingly commit to serving their fellow citizens to live a full and nourished life, by enabling and empowering community groups to live into their passions and dreams.
Now, we are at the end of the five-minute set aside, so I could ask you just to wrap up quickly? Thank you.
We want to do more and we don't feel empowered to do it. And there are community leaders all over our city that want to do more. There are people in our communities that are not leaders yet that want to do something. And it is so, so hard. It needs to be easier, so much easier.
Understood. Thank you very much indeed for the submission. If you wanted the written notes that you've had distributed among councillors, our staff will be able to arrange that.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you. So next is Vanessa Mitchell, representing the Little River Wairua Community Trust.
Good morning.
Yes, certainly. Bring your people to the table.
So, Kellum, if you want to show that one first, if you've got it, you can just walk around the council so they can see it. And then, Mary, you can do the second one halfway through. Okay? Morning, everybody. We're from Little River. My name's Vanessa Mitchell. I'm the current chair for the Little River Wairua Community Trust. This is our playground at Little River. We have one baby swing and one slide. Fiona and I thought it would be a good idea to pop down on Sunday to take some photos, go round again, Kellum, some photos of the playground so you can all see what we're talking about. Hold it up a bit higher, Kellum. And we took a few of our kids down there, just so you got an idea. When we got there, there was two families down there that had eight kids. And then Mount Pleasant School Group arrived on their bikes, which was another 15 kids. So there was 35 children running around. Only two of them were small enough to go on the swing and the other 33 were playing on one slide. Thanks, guys. So in 2015, the Christchurch City Council commissioned the Little River Big Ideas Project to align the vision and aspirations of this community into one document. This was the Little River Big Ideas Plan that I'm sure you're all familiar with. It was endorsed by the community board and from these beginnings was what the playground redevelopment was identified as one of the key priorities for our community. It was identified by our community, it was endorsed by the community board and it was endorsed by the Christchurch City Council. In 2018, the Christchurch City Council Long-Term Plan put aside $239,000 to be assigned for this playground development. $30,000 in 2019 for design and the remaining $209,000 in 2020 for construction. The Little River Wairua Community Trust has been working in partnership with the Christchurch City Council Playground Planning Staff over the past year to complete the design of this new play space, including community consultation with over 250 residents at the Little River Community Breakfast in November 2019 that your playground planning staff all attended. The Christchurch City Council staff have done an amazing job fitting this specialty-selected range of playground equipment into a limited space and have kept to the budget that you allocated them. The construction of this fantastic design that the council staff have put together for us will help reinvigorate Little River as the vibrant and bustling community it was pre-COVID. Tourism is the heart of business in this area, keeping our community employed. The craft station recorded over 450,000 visitors last year in Little River. For this town to return to the level of business, we need to offer New Zealand families a reason to stop, shop and play to enjoy our area. The completion of this playground is vital to attract visitors to this fantastic location, which is situated within the heart of your Christchurch city ward. The proposed playground design was due to be released for final public endorsement at the Little River Pumpkin Festival in April of 2020. But COVID led to the cancellation of the pumpkin festival and delayed it for the final planning sign-off phase. If it had not been for the COVID lockdown, this project would already be out for tender, for construction. COVID should not be a reason to cancel or defer this project, but rather a driver to complete this project that supports local tourism and underpins community, family health and wellbeing of our community. The Little River Wairua Community Trust recognises the need for this project to be completed this year and has voted just last week to put forward $10,000 of its lottery's grant towards the playground costs, moving these funds from other projects it had planned. But these funds are only available in 2020. We cannot hold this lottery grants beyond the end of this year. Please put back into your budget the $209,000 that you'd allocated to this project for construction and let us finish what we started together in 2016. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Thank you. That doesn't leave time for questions, but thank you for a very clear and well illustrated submission. And thanks to your support team for doing that so well. Thanks very much indeed. Thank you. So next, I'd like to invite Matt Norris to the table, representing the Food Resilience Network. Is Matt here? Matt's not here. Okay. So Joe Sutherland, is Joe here? Joe, thank you for joining us. I'd invite you to the table to make your submission. Thanks very much.
Good morning. Can you hear me all right?
Yep, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I want to say I'm very nervous. I haven't done this before. So we are in a climate and ecological emergency and it is not going to go away. When it intensifies, it's going to be a lot worse than the pandemic and the disruption we've had from that. Sadly, it seems to be happening faster than earlier predicted. This pandemic may require cost-cutting, but please don't ignore climate and ecological measures. Christchurch needs active transport and more spending on public transport, not bigger roads. We also need community support. The work the council does to support community is very valued. This is a key part of a resilient future. Anything that supports inclusivity and equity is also part of community resilience. Two big-ticket items in the capital program are the Northern Arterial Extension and the new stadium. I assume they're both still in the program. Both of these may well be impacted upon by the pandemic due to changing work and leisure habits. Although there is a need for construction to boost the economy, neither of these projects will mitigate or adapt in a climate and ecological crisis. On the contrary, the Northern Arterial is taking away prime arable land, which will be needed in the future. The stadium needs international tourism to be viable. My husband is a tourism academic and I think that international tourism seriously affects... Okay, I can't read my notes, but... So international tourism may well be seriously affected for decades, not just a few years. And he backs me up on that. I'll just read it out and I hope it makes sense. I question whether an asset such as a stadium will be useful in coming decades, especially as there are more pressing needs, such as energy-efficient public and active transport. Both of these items could become stranded assets. I'm really concerned about that. I'm very encouraged by the increase of major cycle routes and the uptake of cycling seen as a result. I believe it is very important that these are continued as soon as possible with connections and improvements also implemented. I want to note that the 1 million over three years for local cycling networks doesn't seem like enough. Similarly, $20,000 for bike parking over three years is tiny. I'm a landscape architect. I know how far 20 grand goes and it's not very far. I want to ask, today that you have the courage and foresight to spend money on a climate resilient future. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed for the submission and taking the time to come and talk to us this morning. Thanks very much indeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So that leaves us a little bit ahead of time. We've got a break which is scheduled until 11:20 and my intention would be to start again bang on time at 11:20 with everybody in the room so that we can continue to keep on time for the second part of the session. So we'll adjourn until 11:20. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so if I can ask people please to take their seats and we'll get into the next session. So moving into the next group of submitters, I would invite Frank Pipe from Carapah Holdings Limited to the table. Frank, good morning. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning all. How are you? My name is Frank Pipe. I own property on the corner of Islem and Clyde Road, and there I run two businesses. One is called Frank's Liquor, wines, beer and spirits. I've had that for 27 years. And the other one is Monsieur CAF, which I built on the site and I've had that for 25 years last month. Firstly, I come to say that I am in support of the hospitality in New Zealand Canterbury branch submission, which they will put to you with regard to the rates and looking at the hospitality trade. But I'll leave that to them to talk to you about that. When I was writing in support of their submission, I thought it was an opportunity to come and talk to the council. I have done so on local matters to the Fennelford Board but not to the council as a whole. So I'll just run through a few of these things, and they're in relation to the hospitality trade, to the earthquake, the support, and that I think should be becoming to a local small business. So I've been in business for 27 years in this location. And we've come through earthquakes and now COVID. And during that time, I have to say that Christchurch City Council have given me no support, no encouragement or business support that I found incredibly disappointing. Because I'm a business owner and operator that puts a lot of time, effort, care and money into 19 staff and the community in general. I've never advertised. I look after my community base, and I've done that for 25 years. And yet the council in their wisdom always seemed to oversee that. The council spend an exorbitant amount of good, feel-good monies, I call it, to boost the community and promote charities. To my knowledge, they have never once engaged with or picked up the phone or talked to small business owners like myself, who year after year generate taxes and income for the community and the council. I alone through the business that I've had would put $500,000 or $600,000 in wages into the community. In the budget, which I read through last night, and I must say I only received a notice on Friday to attend this meeting. So quickly read through it all and to refresh myself. But in the budget, the council is boasting of distribution of 7.2 million as part of their strength in communities funds. And they now wish to extend that by another 350,000 K as a one-off boost in this time. That is all out of taxpayers' rates. I feel the council needs to work for everybody. Everyone who lives in Christchurch, not just the less fortunate and not just those with the big purse strings, but those that create the jobs and keep the community vibrant. During the earthquake, and I say through poor planning, wasteful amounts have been spent on useless developments, which are part of the reasons why operators with good insurance payouts took their cash to other cities and now are sitting land banking all these beer sites around the city. There was no help to these people. There was no advice. There was no counselling. If we look back further, it was poor insurance that was done by the council through their council members that led to a lot of this problem. In a time of crisis, one would expect that the council should show loyalty to local business and to have some form of control on the number of licences. But to the contrary, the council during the earthquakes pushed and promoted coffee shops, bars and cafes to open at such a rate that some of them only lasted two years. Christchurch people with ambitions, with dreams, put their energy, their cash, their borrowed cash and their false hopes were promoted by councillors and developers. As with any retail sector, the hospitality pie is only so big. And the fact that the council did not monitor and control the entrance into the sector has led to a hospitality sector that is in total disarray. The exposing just recently by members of the media of the super liquor operators who have been exploiting staff and thus defrauding good operators like myself for several years was swept under the table by the council who continue to allow them to hold licences and to be trading.
Now, we are at the end of the five minutes allotted, so if I could ask you just to finish up reasonably quickly, please.
Yes, I can. So these are hard choices that you guys have to make. I'll just do a couple of things. With the COVID, there's a lot of hurt happened in our time. There are businesses gone bust. People have laid off staff. People are working long hours and unfortunately some of them have had to close. I was disappointed to see that the mayor and the council did not take any wage reductions in the lockdown. I should think this showed lack of leadership at a time when many, many businesses were cutting staff. There's a whole things that need to be done, but I would ask that the council take time to reflect and correct the things that they have done. There should be accountability. They should be looking at the staff numbers and the wager. There should be, why are water rates being charged on CVs and not on usage? Why does Vbase have a monopoly on function catering? It's hard enough on the hospitality trade.
We are now well beyond the five minutes allotted, I'm afraid.
Thank you.
All right, but thank you very much indeed for the submission. Certainly the matter that you raised about the mayor and councillors and the pay reduction, you may have seen in the news just in the last few days that the remuneration authority determination has actually resulted in a reduction in salary for the mayor and councillors. That was only reported in the last few days. The remuneration for the mayor and councillors, that was only reported in the last few days. You may not have seen it.
No, I didn't see that.
All right. Yeah.
I understand and I know champion the cause for it to be done.
All right. All right. Thank you very much indeed for the submission and for the points that you've made. Thank you. All right. Next, I would invite Scott Butcher from the Avon Otakodo Forest Park to the table. Scott, thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much for the chance to present. So yes, I'm the co-chair of Avon Otakodo Forest Park. And I've got five key points that relate to my submission. So basically firstly, while we acknowledge the impact of COVID-19 on council budgets and the necessary need for reducing or reductions in spending, we support the allocation of adequate funding for ecological restoration across Christchurch and in particular the Avon Otakodo River Corridor. Obviously, there's been a lot of talk in council of this, a climate and biodiversity emergency. And we would like to see funding continue to support and address those issues because they are essential. Christchurch City Council has clearly been a leader in a lot of ecological restoration and we'd like to see that maintained certainly into the future. So when reading through the annual plan, it's difficult to determine from the plan what funding has been allocated to the red zone for ecological restoration. While we understand there has been 25 million, I think, allocated for the actual annual planning process and to read the document, it's very difficult to understand in that plan what is going to be directed towards the ecological restoration components. So we would like to see that made more transparent if that's possible. Thirdly, volunteer projects in the red zone require adequate resourcing. The group that I belong to, Avon Otakodo Forest Park, we have nine leasehold sites or nine leased sites within the red zone. Now, as part of our leases, we have to maintain certain elements of our sites and that falls on us. So elements such as fencing of those sites, and for a small group, those aspects are quite expensive. So again, what we're sort of saying is that for the budget that's coming up, we would like to see that adequate money is allocated towards supporting volunteer groups doing ecological restoration activities. And yeah, I mean, my assumption is that money obviously will come from the 25 million. But again, it's not clear as to how that will filter down to volunteer groups. My point four is in the original draft plan, it mentions that I think three years out from now, 2022, 23 or something like that, Horseshoe Lake Reserve was going to receive a lot of money for a boardwalk. Now, what we would like is that money, if possible, is allocated in capital expenditure for Horseshoe Lake Reserve in the next year. Because the money that we've been accessing through the park ranges is operational and we would like to see, if possible, capital expenditure for restoration activities allocated for the reserve. And there's a number of reasons that. One of them is obviously it's symbolic, but it also shows that there's committed funding to carry out restoration plantings within the reserve. And basically, the last point, one of the last points is that essentially I've been doing a fair bit of work and engaging with people around some of the emerging issues within the red zone. And one of those is that there are really quite substantive weed issues occurring or that are on the horizon. So again, what we would like to see is that there is is that there is, you know, that there is adequate resource allocated for some of these weeds issues. I'm speaking to specialists who have really focused in on the weeds. They're looking, a lot of the weed issues are going to exponentially increase within the red zone. So the time is now to get on to some of those issues and address some of those issues. So essentially, I guess those are my main points. If there's any questions, fire them at me.
Thank you very much. Are there questions?
Jimmy. You mentioned the wholesale budget. There's a capital item, capital program or operation cost. How much?
I think it was 2022, 23, it was 98,000 allocated to boardwalks.
Yes.
And what we're sort of saying is we think that some of that capital funding should come into this financial year that's coming up and for restoration activities. So replanting native forest. So replanting native forest in areas where they can be replanted.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for the time taken to make the submission this morning.
Okay.
Thank you. So next, we have the Akeroa Rate Payers Association and
Comfort Inn, Bob.
Oh, sorry. Um, I'm moving forward a line. So Comfort Inn, Bob Pringle. Bob, thank you for joining us. Welcome to the table.
Thank you. Uh, Bob Pringle, we own Comfort Inn, Ricketton. I put submissions in. Things have changed, as most of you are aware, or hopefully we are aware. Um, big concern of me of this council is where we get our rates from. Our annual general charge, we can do thirty, no, it's thirty-two percent. Christchurch City Council sets at three. I think we start to have a hard look at this. Because everyone uses a library, everyone has democracy, everyone wants their own sun. You know, I'm responsible for paying $50,000 to this council. We just have the old ability to pay. They went out in the eighties. We haven't got any ability to pay. And like a comfort in, we're looking at $45,000. What do we get? You know, how many people from our place go to the libraries? Go on the buses? I had a ride on a bus the other day and I said to the bus driver, I paid $23,000 for this ride and the bus driver looked quite odd at me. And that's what I've paid since I've been in Christchurch for the last 10 years. Now, we have to start and look at who benefits and who pays. And it's looking right from the bottom up. You know, we can say this person's got this or this person, this person needs more water or this one needs more. Everyone uses water for a house. And just because you've got a $10 million house or a $500 house, you still need services. So we have to start and lock somewhere at our rate base. And I know a lot of other councils are locking around that 30%. So then it spreads everything. All right. The business is in Christchurch, the hospitality businesses and a lot of other ones, having got the money to pay the terrific rates to subsidise other people. So at some stage, we have to have a big look at that question of who benefits and who pays. The other one I want to have a look at to talk to you about is the one I've been here a couple of weeks ago and spoke about the home share. With Airbnb and this light water batch. We have to now get into the situation where we put compliance into this so everyone is safe. It's this council and this council table here now, if you're not going to make money available to police this, to make sure they've got a business warrant of fitness, I support hospitality in New Zealand's submissions to you, to the council, on this and other things. But we have to do it now. It's dried up now. Those houses are going back to homes. It's all right to have the ones that are legitimate Airbnb. When you've got one woman looking after 25 houses and not paying commercial rates, you know, where's the fairness on that? So this is why I ask you that, you know, make the money. You know, you've got 25 parking mordons in the town. We've got a part-time person to do compliance for business warrant of fitnesses. Like, there's money to be made there. Like, there's 4,000 on Airbnb. If you paid $209,000 like I did for a business warrant of fitness, there's a cost recovery there. So it doesn't need to cost the council a lot of money. So those are two major things that I want to make today, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Sam.
Thank you very much, Bob, for coming in and presenting that. I think it's, you know, you've highlighted the challenges we have with rates. In terms of that uniform annual general charge and the need to increase it, would you be supportive of it progressively being increased over time, sort of like we're doing now?
Yeah, I think we have to, but we we've come off a very low base.
Yeah.
You know, because, you know, other councils, I've been, they've been collecting 30%.
Yeah, so there's a bit of catch-up to play.
So there's a lot of catch-up. And like, you know, we can't do 1%, we were locking, we were locking here for another 30 years.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Leanne.
Um, just thank you for your submission, and I agree, we've got the paper coming back very soon on the consultation that we've done on the Airbnb, so that's going to really help us look at how we resolve that issue. So thank you for raising it. Um, just in terms of that uniform annual general charge, that would be such a significant change to the annual plan. I'm just wondering whether you would support us actually doing a sort of a root and branch analysis of the rates uh for the long-term plan, which is the next financial year, because it would be such a significant shift from where we are at the moment.
Yes, but, you know, whoever benefits from something should pay for it. We shouldn't be collecting the ones that don't benefit from it. And, you know, I just locked down Ricketton Road, and we've been here for 10 years, and I think they're just about finished there. They had to put a tunnel down there, like they did in Napier in 1935. Like, Napier CBD, they tell me, they put fibre into the businesses there in a day and a half. They put tunnels underneath there and knocked all the corners off, and they rebuilt, you know, 100 years ago. In Christchurch, I don't think we put a tunnel down the main street. Like, we see those cattle tunnels going through the roads and the state highways. Had to put one of those down, Ricketton Road with your sewage and your water down the bottom and your services up the top. You know, someone could have been on a knee bike, drive down there and fix everything up, and we would have one dig up. You know, a lot of businesses, the virtually gone broke because of that just continually work down there. Like, it's too late now, but we have to look smarter to do things. You know, it might be expensive at the time, but over a 10-year period, it's a fraction of the cost. And as in Napier, in a day and a half to put fibre into CBD, um, I took a tour up there and a fellow said that, it blew me away because all I did was blow it up and there's a pipe into every building. You know, you put rises every half block and every block. It's not hard and it can be done. But, you know, it saves that congestion, the congestion on your road.
All right. Thank you very much indeed for, you know, two points really well made through the submission, and thanks for the answers to questions as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So now we come to Harry Stronach from the Akeroa Rate Payers Association. Um, so Victoria first and then Harry after. So, yep, Victoria, welcome to the table. Good to see you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the three minutes and I'll be very brief, but my submission is somewhat broader than the ones you've heard. And my main point is the business, the council cannot return to business as usual. It really has to listen and respond to ratepayers and not specifically cater to business interest. Internal silos appear to remain firmly in place, and a bloated $11 million top-heavy management system is well beyond the reach of public comment. Management and administration must change, as highlighted in the Chief Ombudsman's report and as exemplified in the recent low approval rating. And I await a more open, transparent council with improved communication skills. Last year, the council declared a climate change emergency. However, in my view, the declaration was little more than greenwash and propaganda if the equivalent of roundup is going to be used to kill weeds in the area. It makes the whole resolution somewhat meaningless. There's often a lack of understanding and concern shown to ratepayers, and reports and policies are always administered in a one-size-fits-all manner. What works in the city does not always work in an isolated rural community. Holding events over dry summer months robs residents of precious water during level four water restrictions. The council's priority should be on the wellbeing of residents, not scheduling fairs, festivals and sporting events to simply accommodate visitor numbers. The issue of climate change must be taken seriously as the east coast becomes drier. Visitor numbers are currently down, but they will increase again in the next two to five years. The Banks Peninsula Destination Management Strategy must remove the negative impacts of mass tourism. Akeroa is a small historic town that cannot expand to accommodate the demands of tourism operators. Without the oversight, without proper oversight, Akeroa will become a Disneyland of historic facades with no viable community. Banks Peninsula needs high-value and low-volume tourism. What Akeroa has experienced is neither sustainable or desirable. In this regard, Christchurch, New Zealand, has a direct conflict of interest since its mandate is to increase economic development. Its track record of stunts are often frivolous and ill-advised, in my view. 12 staff are paid between $100,000 and $325,000. Ratepayers' money would be better spent saving the arts centre. Images of traffic congestion, including buses on footpaths, have been rejected because staff were not present at the time, and I was informed that there were no problems in Akeroa at last year's cruise ship debrief in Littleton. So there's a degree of denial going on, as well as a lack of accurate information regarding activities that take place in Akeroa. However, elected representatives must rely on staff reports when making decisions. And again, there has to be a significant reset with regard to the council in time to come. So that's my three minutes.
Great. Thank you very much indeed for speaking with us this morning, but also for your very comprehensive submission, which has already been made available to us on the hub. So, yeah, Victoria, once again, thanks for for addressing us this morning. Thank you.
I appreciate the difficulty that you've been working under. It's been a very hard couple of months, so thank you for your service.
Thank you. So now we come to Harry Stronach from the Akeroa Rate Payers Association. Harry, good morning. Thanks for joining us.
Good morning. This morning, I'm going to talk about strategic planning, the glue that sort of holds everything together. Now, I see in the revised annual plan that expenditure on the Akeroa Wharf has been probably up for a year or maybe more. I think that's a good move. We can make do with existing wharf for a little while longer. But more importantly, a pause here will allow for a more widespread and inclusive planning process. A new wharf's a big ticket item. It's a focal point in the town. It needs to be really well thought out, and I wouldn't be surprised if it takes three or four years to get complete community buy-in to what is going to be done with that. But you're planning for 100 years out. That's okay. Now, planning, you know, the crystal ball business, you look into the future, evaluate the trends, and if you get it sort of 60% right, you might think you're doing okay. At earthquakes come along, COVID-19, and then you find that it wasn't that good a plan. I don't think New Zealand is inherently very good at planning. You know, there's historical reasons to that. We need to do better. We can do better, and we need to put more planning power and responsibility into the hands of local communities. There's been all sorts of previous plans and studies. The Akeroa Harbour Basin Settlement Study was a good read. That was back in 2009. Currently, there's talk of a destination management plan. There's talk of a town plan. It's not that there's a lack of effort, and some of the output has been good. But planning for our area has not been a coherent process. It has lacked follow-through, and there is no master plan that brings it all together. Most importantly, there has seldom been, seldom ever been any real community buy-in. What we see in Akeroa, a council staff turning up to investigate a problem. They work on solutions. They come up with a plan. Sometimes they persevere through to implementation. They might be doing roads, wastewater, freshwater, safety issues, rubbish. They drive out from the city, spend some time in Akeroa, and go away again. They bring with them experience of ideas and solutions that might have worked well here in the city. It's a natural step to try and apply those solutions in Akeroa. But Akeroa and the wider peninsula, it's not Peunhei and it's not New Brighton. It's different. Coming up with preferred solutions, which council staff like to do, based on experience elsewhere and trying to impose them on a community is not the way forward. It doesn't bring about community wellbeing. It undermines community wellbeing. Underlying, sorry, underlying strategic planning, there are assumptions about growth. There's an Akeroa wastewater project that's going to be on your desk for a decision later on this year. It's a $50 million plus deal, you know? The underlying growth model, the CCC model, assumes that over the next 30 years, there will be less than 15% population growth in Akeroa. Now, is that really realistic? Demographics have been changing in the last few years, driven by better communications, and now it's all been kicked along by COVID-19. It seems clear that various forms of working from home are going to become more commonplace. I don't know what that means for your plans in the central city, but I'm pretty sure I know what it means for Akeroa. The house occupancy rate is likely to steadily increase. People want to live in desirable locations like Akeroa, and there's enough people who can afford to do so that will make that happen. In recent years, the Akeroa house occupancy rate has only been 40%. 60% of the properties sit there empty most of the time. Your planning rules can constrain the footprint of the town and so on, but you can actually stop people living in houses that they already own. There's been steady development going on in the background. I mean, some mornings, there are more concrete trucks coming out to Akeroa than there are cars with CCC on the side of them. The batches are being upgraded to holiday houses, and a bit later on, they will transition to permanent homes. If the occupancy rate in Akeroa goes to 80%, it will still be lower than most towns in New Zealand, and the permanent population will have doubled from the current value. So what does that mean for planning? I mean, I've already mentioned the wastewater scheme, and you can think about that when you're making the decision on it. The water supply into the town was in crisis mode this last summer. It's only going to get worse. The other big issue is roading, access to the town, parking. What do we do about the buses? We don't really have a plan for that one at all at the moment, so we can start from scratch on that one. So strategic planning, we need to focus on this and make it work. We need to make sure that there is meaningful involvement from the community, and we need a process that lets the community take ownership of the results. Thank you.
And thank you. That's just filled the the five minutes available, so it doesn't leave time for questions. But thanks for speaking with us this morning and also for your written submission, which has already been made available. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now I would invite Mike Norris, Chair of the Akeroa Civic Trust, to the table. Mike, good morning. Good to see you. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, councillors, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Chief Executive. I don't suppose many of you realise that technically, any cruise ship entering Akeroa Harbour is entitled to dump treated sewage at level A, which Harry will explain. Uh, that is at a level below the wastewater scheme you are planning. It can discharge that in the harbour. If it's level B, which is partially treated, it can discharge it within three miles of the coast. If it's untreated sewage, it can discharge it 15 miles from the coast, which is about where our Groper Hole is, where we like to fish. And these big ships with 3,000 passengers can discharge up to half a million litres of raw sewage every day. So when you couple that, well, I realise this is not a city council matter, it's an ECAN matter, but the city council, Christchurch, New Zealand, ECAN, determine whether to allow ships or not into our community. We're not a port like Littleton, so when a decision has to be made, it seems to be a joint decision between your three entities. Coronavirus has tipped the scales, and it means that no longer a cruise ship scene has the white knights riding in with economic salvation. Cruise association statistics claim that every passenger arriving spends on average between $298 to $400 per person and therefore give a benefit to the category economy of $50 million. These figures are highly suspicious because we all know, if you ask a cafe owner in Akeroa, he's lucky to get $10 out of a passenger. And the warfage fee or the boring fee is about $7. So I don't believe that the cruise association propaganda, which says that it's an industry worth $560 million to New Zealand, needs to be believed. And I think we should take a leaf out of the US Department of Congress Transportation Committee. When I quote from them, this is a letter written to the chief of Carnival Cruises, who own Princess. Cruise ships are a fertile breeding ground for infectious diseases due to their environmental conditions and physical structure. While cruisers are often viewed as carefree escape from the reality where passengers can dine, dance, relax and mingle, we would hope that the reality of the COVID-19 epidemic will place a renewed emphasis on public health and passenger safety. But frankly, that has not been seen up to this point. In fact, it seems as though Carnival Corporation and its portfolio of nine cruise lines, which represents 109 cruise ships, is still trying to sell this cruise line fantasy and ignoring the public health threat posed by coronavirus to future, future potential passengers and crew. We understand your business and economic livelihood is focused in the entertainment and travel industries, but the realities of the coronavirus pandemic demand that the incentive to entertain is checkered by a responsibility incentive to entertain is checkered by a responsibility to protect the health of passengers and crew. Unfortunately, recent media reports have called into question Carnival's commitment to that goal. Well, they have now been fined cumulatively $60 million in US courts, even though these ships are not registered in any American port. They're in ports of flags of convenience like Malta, Panama, and others, so they are not subject to stringent labour regulation or paying taxes. Yet we welcome these ships into our community as though they are going to bring economic largesse, which will save all our cafes. They don't stay in our hospitality. They don't stay in our accommodation. So it's a golden opportunity for us to take a fresh look at mass tourism, as Victoria and Harry have alluded to. And how can the City Council take a stand here? Well, my takeaway is limit the size of all ships coming to Akeroa to no more than 500 passengers. Any bigger ships, once they're allowed to sail again, send them to Littleton, where you've built this very, very lavish terminal, and you'll have some control over them. Use health and safety measures to control access to the wharf. As you have rightly said in the past, you've got very limited powers over what the cruise ships can do. Well, you have a wharf that's needing repair, and it would be a good idea, I believe, for the City Council to examine changing your regulations so that you can restrict the size of ships entering our harbour.
Any questions? Thank you, Mike. There is time for just one quick question, if anybody has one. All right. Thank you very much indeed for your submission.
Well, I hope that between you, ECAN, and Christchurch, New Zealand, some major changes can occur in the regulation of cruise ships, which happen to be exploiting our community.
Yep. And as you say, we've got the benefit of some downtime that may allow us to do that. So thank you very much indeed for the submission.
We have written a letter to our Prime Minister, which has been copied to the Mayor and the Deputy Mayor and to the Chief Executive, and we've had some amazing traction already from that, that we hope Simon Upton is coming to Akeroa personally to see what the situation is. So this has to be escalated from local government to a national government, and we've done that.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. So moving to our next submitter, John Batchelor. John, thank you for joining us. Welcome to the table.
Thank you. So I'm just a humble ratepayer. I'll be very brief, but I would like you to consider seriously the following. I personally think you need to rework the budget of this council to cover essential services only. It's probably going to involve a downsizing of council, which I realise will be very difficult, the decision-making on there. No large projects in the foreseeable future, only those with contracted obligations. As a community, we cannot afford the extravagance that we've seen in recent years, and, to be blunt, the money is not yours to waste. The financial effects of this virus event are still to come, and I can see it being five years before we'll be anything like back to what we were at the beginning of this year. And I just want you to consider those points. I think council is going to have to downsize everything it does, just like a whole lot of businesses that are out there. If we come out of this at 60% of what we were beforehand, we'll be doing all right. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sarah?
Thank you for that. When it comes to keeping costs low and sustainable for ratepayers, what's your position on the potential sweating of assets that then cost ratepayers a bit more in the future, or investing in things now that save us money in the long term when there's other crises coming?
Well, you'll have a lot more information at your fingertips than I've got, but...
As a general principle, yeah.
What I see is that we've got to have a mind reset of just where we are, like at a national level. There's just going to be huge unemployment, probably this side of Christmas, and we know it's quite obvious that tourism's just a sector that is not going to be anything like what it was anytime soon.
Yeah. And big projects like the stadium?
Personally, we don't need it, in my opinion. I mean, one day we might, but at the moment, it will be the last thing on my list of priorities. We need to serve our ratepayers, and we need to show our ratepayers that you guys are spending every dollar in your budget like it was one of your own dollars, and like also too, that you'd just be made redundant, you know? Seriously, serious scrutiny on how you spend.
Thank you. I'll take one more question from James Daniels.
Kia ora, John. The project that you'd most like us not to spend money on, the MUA, the multi-use arena, do you realise that central government's putting a lot of money into that, especially in the early days? That's one thing. But what's the next thing after that that you would... You're saying, "Don't spend money." What's the next one after that?
Well, you, as a council, you have to, you know, you have to find a, you know, a collective position, but we can't, at the moment, with this virus event, we can't afford sort of things that are like luxuries, focus on essential services.
What would you cut?
What would I cut? Well, I realise you can't cut anything that you're already contracted to, that's halfway through, like the, say, the facility on Antigua Street. I know that's started and probably you've committed to that having to continue, but we've got a lot of maintenance we've still got to complete, haven't we?
Yeah.
Roads, for one. Things like cycleways costing millions and millions of dollars, just can't afford that at the moment.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much indeed for the submission. Thanks for joining us this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next, I would invite Peter Toffley, representing the Beckenham Neighbourhood Association, to the table. Peter, good morning. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much, and good morning. This mic's on, is it?
Yep.
Right. Basically, we see this need to revise the draft annual plan as trying to make the best of a very bad situation. And at the outset, we'd like to congratulate the council and its staff on having risen to an unprecedented challenge, needing to revise the original draft annual plan in the relatively short time between the onset of the COVID-19 crisis and the statutory deadline for signing off on the annual plan and striking a rate. And we welcome this opportunity to comment on what must be regarded as the result of an impressive organisational effort driven by excellent leadership. So we would like to congratulate Madame Mayor and Madame Chief Executive and all others concerned in the process. We will be submitting a revised version of our original submission by the deadline of 29th June. What I would like to do here is firstly to highlight aspects of the original draft plan that are unchanged and to which we attach particular importance, and secondly, to comment on features of the updated draft plan that we regard as significant. Overall, we think the council's met the challenge well, but we do have some reservations here and there. Firstly, in the area of finance, we welcomed the achievement of a lower overall rate increase than envisaged for this year in the LTP, and we applaud the proposal for an even lower average rate increase in the updated draft plan. In this regard, we note that there were calls for a nil rate increase in view of the COVID-19 crisis. We appreciate the council's having given those calls serious consideration, and we accept the conclusion that this could not be achieved without unacceptable reductions in scope or levels of service. Turning to water-related matters, firstly, we support the proposed excess water use We don't wish to cast doubt on the council's intention to continue giving a high level of priority to the allocation of resources to wastewater as well as to water supply. However, we note some local instances of cuts in these vital areas of expenditure, notably $4.5 million slash on Eastern Terrace trunk main renewal, and a relatively minor sum on Palatine wellhead conversion. In relation to wastewater, Summerfield pump station pressure main, gone. Eastern Terrace wastewater main upgrade, $345,000 cut. These are local instances, but their impact is not local. It will be, they will have network implications, and we're seeking an assurance from the council that they and similar, that those cuts and similar cuts, which have no doubt taken place elsewhere in the city, will be reinstated in next year's annual plan. Turning to parks and heritage, nearly 10 years ago, the Mid Heathcut Linear Park Master Plan implementation, which was all ready to go, was put on hold because of earthquakes. It's still on hold, and that approaching anniversary makes it pretty painful to see the originally proposed spend of $121,454 being axed in the update, even though there is a compensating $64,000 proposed on bank stabilisation. As with other local expenditure cuts already mentioned, we seek an assurance from the council that this item will be reinstated in next year's plan. Turning to glyphosate, we applaud the council for seeking specific feedback on this issue. The rationale for the proposed return to the use of glyphosate-based weed killers appears to us, on the face of it, sound, even though the step may cause some regret, providing that their use is conducted in a manner that is not hazardous to environmental and public health. In that regard, we note the protocol set out in the draft, and we would observe that all will depend on council contractors observing and following the protocol strictly, and that could require some policing.
Now, just draw your attention, Peter, to the fact that we've come to the end of the five minutes, set aside for the submission, but noting that obviously you're going to be providing a written submission that we look forward to receiving.
Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed for joining us today. Thank you. So next, representing Canterbury Community Gardens, Hayley Julieta. And we're the support crew as well. Good to see you all.
Yeah.
No, that's great. So Hayley, thanks for joining us. Thanks to the whole team for joining us.
Kia ora, kua tō, councillors. Thanks for having us today. So today we thought we'd do a people point, because we couldn't do a PowerPoint, so I hope you don't mind. So we're the Canterbury Community Gardens Association, and we are a not-for-profit volunteer committee, very vibrant and very diverse. So this is just some of our committee members today. So before we get into our people point, I'd just like to introduce you to some of them. So just so you can get a feel for the diversity of community gardening in Canterbury. So we've got Zain. Zain is doing awesome work in Wainoni. He is doing edible streets and providing fresh food to the people in his community. Robin Kelty, who has been the guardian of Beverly Park Rose Garden for a long time now, and pulls a...
Heritage Rose Garden.
Sorry, Heritage Rose Garden, pulls a team together regularly down there to look after that garden. Rachel Vogan, Rachel's our ambassador, procurement of resources for the gardens, and has her own Happy Garden brand. Catherine Legend, in community gardening in Christchurch, and also our chairperson. And Kathy, who's part of the team, who have taken three acres of red zone land and turned it into a fabulous community space. So that's our team. So, Zain?
Hey. So there are over 37 community gardens across Greater Christchurch, spread over the city, not just in one suburb. The gardens are as diverse as the people that attend them.
Some gardens are open, some are fenced, some don't. Like the one I'm involved with, the Beverly Park Heritage Rose Garden, that is such a place of solace for a vulnerable community.
Community gardens are places where everyone has a place. Everyone is welcome. Everyone can belong. It doesn't matter what part of society you're from. They're very, very valuable places. They're places where older people have a voice, a sense of purpose, where the young can learn and become empowered. Because community gardens are generally open, fun, and non-judgmental, they're very, very safe places to be. It's literally like a library of gardening for the community, a connective place.
I am a part-time coordinator. This is my title, but I'm more than that. I coordinate volunteers. I organise our events, garden club, regular school visits, education programmes. Some of the agencies I supervise for are Youth Justice, Corrections, Stroop Foundation, migrant groups, Kingsley School, Vando School. I'm responsible for making sure the plants grow and the gardens are thriving, and we have food to share. My most important job is looking after the wellbeing of the people that come to the garden and connecting with other services if needed. I do all this in 30 hours with no backup, so please support us so we can support our
We know from our experience after the earthquakes, we get busy. If the earthquake was addressed with hustle, then COVID and the climate change emergency is the perfect storm. Community gardens are the places where people will seek out to learn more and to be resilient. So let's enable this and invest resources, invest in resources and local leaders. Post-COVID, people are seeking connection to get back to nature and community with a sense of purpose. It's great for their mental health, creating diversity in our noise with a local footprint, a slower pace of life which is more meaningful and with intent. And every single one of these products in this basket has a story to tell, which I'm really proud of.
So over the COVID lockdown, some of our committee, the University of Canterbury Sustainability Team, and a number of other people from around the country came together for the Agatera Rawa Community Garden. I don't know if we're going to call it something. So we took the opportunity to get some data, to support what we're saying. So we surveyed every single garden in the whole country, and the data was shocking. But in Christchurch, 98% of the garden places are owned by the council. There is only 22% of gardens have a part-time paid employee, and 10% have a full-time employee, which leaves the remainder with no employee. And we know from Christchurch that the gardens that have a coordinator do much better than the ones that don't. I'm just looking at the time. But then the numbers that come out of the gardens in terms of volunteerism and outputs more than outweigh those figures for what we're delivering in Christchurch. So we're just coming to you today to say it's great that you put more money into the strength of communities, but really understand what these spaces deliver for the city, and let's support them some more. And that doesn't always mean money. That just means reducing the barriers for more work.
So thank you much, very much indeed, for your submission and for your people point presentation this morning, and for articulating so well the value that community gardens bring to, you know, a really wide range of people and communities right the way across the city. Thanks very much indeed for the time taken. Thank you. So next, we've got David Close from the Christchurch East Labour Electoral Committee. David, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David Lawrence is making the presentation.
Thank you.
David's my mentor, yeah. Thanks for the opportunity. I'm David Lawrence, representing the Christchurch East Labour Electoral Committee. I hope you've had time to be able to read our wide-ranging, 14-page submission to the annual plan, but because of time constraints, I'll just speak to some of the issues that are more important to us. Rates. Rates. We understand the necessity for investing in infrastructure and things like social housing, and appreciate that rate increases are an unfortunate reality. We believe that some provisions should be made for the business owners to postpone rates. Transparency. We submit there is a longstanding disquiet, distrust, and discomfort within the community regarding transparency from the council. Things like increased in committee council meetings, and a lack of publication regarding, regarding the new borrowing, cumulative borrowing, interest rates, interest costs, and repayments all need to be more out there, in the open, and well-publicised. Remuneration inequality is out of control. Councils should take their lead by reducing their own salaries. And remember, the, the average New Zealand wage is about fifty-one thousand a year, and the median, in fact, is much lower than this. The numbers and salaries of the top twenty-five percent of council staff are obscene, and it's time a structure was put in place where a multiple of the lowest-paid employee are paid to executive staff. The council's support of living wa, the living wage is noted and appreciated, and we hope it happens soon. Housing prices. The council can help to restore the local economy by committing to a two-hundred-and-fifty million, ten-year housing plan. And it's quite simple, really, and you have to some extent already started with a thirty million loan to a Tātai Trust. But I'm afraid a hundred and twenty units just doesn't cut the mustard. Remember, there's three hundred and fifty of the council's units that have not been repaired or replaced in the eight years since the quakes. Homeownership is also falling and predicted to go lower. And the demographics of our aging population is scary. The recent Salvation Army survey, survey highlighted this. There are increasing numbers of single, superannuitants, and vulnerable people who have no way of paying market rents. This morning, I was doing my usual weekly volunteer at O Eight Hundred Hungry, Christchurch's largest food bank. And it's disturbing to deliver food to older, vulnerable people who, because of the rents they pay, live in substandard cold accommodation. It doesn't take long for them to become physically and mentally frail. Their life expectancy is much lower than yours and mine, and I've asked, is that fair? So, use the council's borrowing ability to fund an Otatahi Trust expanded building programme. Smaller one-bedroom warm units are in dire need. You should give the trust two-year interest-free loans, and then only charge what you pay. That way, the only cost to you would be the interest on the first fifty million or so, and this could easily be funded by the council's housing development plan. There is more detail in section six of our submission. There are other sections which, because of time restraints, I can't address, but I urge you to read our report in full. Finally, addressing the particular needs of the east. Our number-one priority is affordable rental housing, especially in the New Brighton area. Housing is now important than roads, and we welcome the proposal of a housing development on the old Central New Brighton school site. We also propose that the planning of the red zone area should be entrusted to the Parks Department. Regenerate and other devolved bodies have produced little. The council has the in-house expertise to do this work. If you read sections eight and ten, they cover this in more detail. So in conclusion, I'd just like to say, thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you. I'll take one question from Sam.
Yeah, thank you, David, Davids, for coming in and presenting. I just had one on the living wage that you talked about, and I just would be interested in your thoughts, like in the current economic environment with low interest rates, low productivity, and if we're looking to push those costs up, do you see that as a potential to increase redundancies because people will move to automation? Do you have any thoughts on that?
I think we're concerned about the whole trend towards inequality, which has increased hugely in my lifetime and in David's lifetime. We think it's important that the council play its role in arresting that trend, to this growth of an underclass in New Zealand, and this mighty gap between rich and poor. We used not to have rich and poor in New Zealand. We just see the living wage raising the bottom as one step towards it and modifying it.
Thank you. So David, and David, thank you very much indeed for the submission and taking the time to speak with us this morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. So next, I would invite Wendy Everingham, representing the Littleton Reserves Management Committee, to the table. Wendy, good morning. Good to see you. Thanks for joining us.
Yes, thank you, everyone, for having me at council today. So I'm the deputy chair of the Littleton Reserves Management Committee, and, yeah, so thank you for letting us speak at this. I wanted to speak directly to everyone today to highlight the potential that reserve management committees can offer the entire city as we enter the period of cost savings and instability due to Covid nineteen. I'm encouraged that change is on the way by already observing organisational changes under the leadership of your new CEO. So as a member of the public, I can see positive improvements to council governance issue processes, improving openness, transparency, and consistency already. And so coupled with organisational reviews in progress, I'm hopeful that this greater attention to detail can flow through to reserve management committees, unlocking their potential, and ultimately leading to cost savings for the council, and empowering your willing communities more. So how could I see this happening? You have an opportunity to let all your community boards delegate the management of gazetted reserves to local reserve management committees. Currently, this only happens on the Banks Peninsula. So to successfully do this, I think you need to ensure a correct framework is put in place so that the communities can effectively manage these assets with good direction. So these are some observations I've got. I've been a part of reserve management committees since two thousand and thirteen. These are the things that I think you need to put in place to make sure that could happen. So I think it would be beneficial if all reserve land was gazetted under the Reserved Act of nineteen seventy-seven, because this triggers the possibility of community management. Then once that happens, I think an independent management plan should be developed for the particular reserve, which could then be led by a community-led development plan. And at that point, when those particular processes are in place, the community then could take over full management of the land, working in conjunction with their community board. A final requirement that I think would be needed is that all reserve management committees would have budget lines for their particular reserves within your accounting system. Without that, effective control continues to be limited. So I think council's role needs to become more strategic, and then the day-to-day management can be left to willing and able local communities. So currently, what I see is, the council presents a development plan, and it's very, very rarely that a management plan is developed. So this leaves a void, and communities who are trying hard to manage their reserve land find it incredibly difficult because there's strategic gaps. So two things that quickly come to mind to me, there is no overall fire risk management plan for reserve land, and there's no overall mountain bike policy for Christchurch. From my experience, when your community is empowered to effectively manage the reserves, you get a different level of buy-in. We aren't just volunteers that get called in to run a, you know, to do a community planting. We're there all the time. We don't mass spray huge areas of weeds because it's more cost-effective. We've got time, and so we deal to it. We dig them out, we might cut and paste. We grow our own plants, we maintain the tracks, we create the forest. We're on the ground, we're there to respond all the time because it's our community. So, so I think if council could supply this broader framework, and in the case of the committee I'm on, the gaps that need filling, I mean, we'd like, we'd really like, in our annual plan, your support for an independent management plan and our own budget line. And when this happens, we'll be empowered to manage our land more effectively, and hopefully you'll be empowered to entrust more of community land to, to your wider community, and I think we'll all benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Leanne.
No question, just music to my ears. What a fabulous submission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I mean, Wendy and I have worked together for a number of years, and Wendy, you talk about experience in the reserves. I'm very aware of a lot of the good work that you've not only done, but led as well. So thank you for that, and thank you very much indeed for joining us today. Thank you. So next, we've got Sukie and Maureen from the Rod Donald Banks Peninsula Trust. Good morning, welcome.
Kia ora angin. My name is Maureen McCoy, I'm the chair of the Rod Donald Banks Peninsula Trust. Sukie Thompson is our trust manager. The Rod Donald Trust is your trust. It's a CCO. And this year, we're ten years old. We are humbled by our list of achievements, and very proud of how effectively and efficiently we have done this. It's set out in our submission, we see significant opportunities for what Banks Peninsula offers the city as we recover in this new Covid nineteen world. In support of this, we have four points to make. Firstly, we encourage the council to keep the parks, the tracks, and the marine structures operating and in good condition. Many of them are being used significantly more so post-Covid, because people have discovered or rediscovered the joys of walking, biking, and outdoor recreation. I've certainly seen that in my part of the city, the tracks are trampled. We encourage you to take every measure possible to protect what remains of our wild places, our biodiversity, and our habitat. That includes pest control on Banks Peninsula and the Port Hills. Secondly, the trust is currently negotiating the purchase of a block of land with outstanding landscape and amenity value in the Whakarau Po Littleton Basin, with the aim of establishing a conservation park. We seek council support for this, including a financial contribution, but we do wish to discuss this further, but in a different setting, as it remains commercially sensitive. I'm going to ask Sukie to speak to the second two points.
Thank you, Maureen, and thank you for having us here today. So a couple of points that, that I'd like to make is, we'd like to develop a memorandum of understanding with the council to clarify the role of the Rod Donald Trust in relation to the head-to-head walkway around Littleton Whakarau Po and the Little River Rail Trail. And we see our role as one of negotiating access with private landowners to extend both of those walkways, because they have the potential to be major recreational and low-carbon opportunities for our own people to enjoy health and wellbeing, and for domestic visitors to the area, and later laying the foundation for more international tourism. And our next point is, we are going to be arranging a workshop from the Rod Donald Trust to discuss the use of unformed legal roads for recreation, and we'll be inviting elected representatives and key staff. There are an enormous number of unformed legal roads on Banks Peninsula, and we'd like to assist the council to develop a policy around the use of these public areas for walking and cycling, but in a way that is respectful of and compatible with the surrounding landowners who typically farm that land. And finally, on a personal note, as well as in my role with the trust, I would like to thank the council for appointing a Banks Peninsula ranger, John Fitch, who's been working recently in our area, to the regional parks team, and for our new community parks team at Devosial led by Kerry Bowen. We're really noticing the difference that these staff are making, and it's absolutely brilliant to have people who live in our community, and are part of that community with their ear to the ground, working on these vital assets. So thanks for that, it's made a massive difference. So that's what we wanted to talk with you about.
Thank you very much. So that's left time for questions. Are there any questions? Anne.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Lovely to see you both, and this is slightly unrelated, but related. We talked about inviting councillors for a walk with you to explore some of the Rod Donald Trust areas, and wondering if that's still something in process.
Shall I speak to that one, Maureen? Yeah, we've got a board meeting tonight, Anne, and on the agenda is, well, it's winter now, because we sort of missed our window with Covid nineteen, so when do we want to schedule that? So yes, expect an invite, and I'm glad that you were still keen. When do you think?
Oh, well, spring would be great.
Spring would be great.
When it's warmer, and drier. Yeah, thank you. Great.
Excellent. No further questions? All right. Thank you very much indeed for the presentation and for the submission. Thanks for joining us. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next on the list is Leanne Watson from the Canterbury Employees' Chamber of Commerce. We're running a little bit early, so Leanne doesn't appear to be here. So if we jump ahead, have we got Elliot Hughes from Generation Zero? Or John Allen? So John, do you want to come forward to the table? Thank you very much. Thank you for joining us to make your submission this morning.
I'm just a humble ratepayer, but I wanted to give my two cents on this current plan at the moment. I did a little bit of research on what's happened previously with, when there was being a worldwide depression, and one of the things that will affect our recovery of our local economy is debt liquidation and distressed selling of the city assets, contraction of the money supply and bank loans as they're paid off by people, a fall in the level of asset prices, a still greater fall in the net worth of local businesses and proliferation of bankruptcies, a fall in profits for city businesses, a reduction in output of trade and employment, pessimism and loss of confidence, a fall in nominal interest rates and the rise in the possibility of deflation in adjusted interest rates. Now, recently, I asked under the Official Information Act, how many of these city ratepayers are outstanding in their payments of rates? And as of the thirty-first of March, there are fourteen thousand, five hundred and forty-three ratepayers in arrears, owing a total of twenty million dollars, six hundred and sixty-nine thousand in outstanding rates. The split between the regional council rates can, can only be reported, but as an estimate, between the regional council, two million dollars is owed, and eighteen million dollars is owed to the city council, and that was provided by the information adviser for the office of the chief executive. Now, I understand that only another sixty-three dollars a year added to the current rates is not much, but I remind you, as a council, you're responsible for overseeing the public expenditure. There are accounts, as currently is of the thirteenth of May, two hundred and fifty staff at the council earning more than a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year. The annual wage bill in staff alone is a hundred and ninety-eight million dollars for one thousand seven hundred and eighty-two staff. I would expect for this money spent, the city would run like a Swiss watch. I recently asked where our rubbish recycling is being processed, and the name of the country and the company was declined. But I had the help of a city councillor, who then assured me that, even though it is commercially sensitive, that it is being processed correctly. But I still wonder, how is the name of a recycling plant or the country that it's being sent to is commercially sensitive? The system at the moment is not working for the public, in my opinion. In twenty nineteen, the voter was forty-one point three percent, being a hundred and two thousand votes casted. That's two-fifths of the population only voted for this council. Fifty-eight percent didn't. It's hardly what I call a mandate for the people. When our councillor electorate in St Albans, I feel the public has been sidelined continually for its import into the motorway extension. This has created apathy for participation in local government. I also recently asked for a copy of the CDM plan for the Covid nineteen outbreak. I was told by staff members that's really important at the moment, but I'm still waiting to ask for what the, what the economic recovery plan for the city was prepared for the SARS outbreak in twenty fourteen, and, and updated in twenty nineteen, sorry, in twenty eighteen, and I'm still waiting. Where there is open transparent accountability promised, after onwards been criticized, the council lack of openness regarding public money. Where there is open transparent accountability promised, after onwards been criticised, the council lack of openness regarding public money that has been spent by council staff. I don't support the current plan and I suggest you go back and look at core spending like your roads, water supply, sewage and rubbish. Take care of these issues first and then budget the remaining money and distribute it across the remaining infrastructure of the city.
Thank you very much indeed for the submission. That hasn't left time for questions, but yeah, some points very clearly made. So thank you very much indeed. Thank you. All right. Now, do we have Elliot Hughes here as yet? Elliot, thank you very much indeed for joining us. So you're representing Generation Zero. Welcome to the table. Thanks for taking the time to come and talk with us this morning. Well, this afternoon as it is now, actually. Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Yes, I am here on behalf of Generation Zero. And at Generation Zero, we recognise that these are exceptional times for local governments and that some adjustments need to be made and spending will need to be reduced. However, we do not think that the current balance has been struck correctly between where those cuts are being distributed. Specifically, we think the current plan is not equitable and is not in line with the city council's declaration of a climate emergency which occurred last year. Climate change is a real and urgent threat to Christchurch, to our livelihoods, to our health, to our homes, if you live where sea level rise could affect you. And I simply don't see that urgency in the city council's annual plan. Fundamentally, climate change was dismissed as a footnote and that's incredibly disappointing. I also think that the current balance between active transport and roading, where we see 77% cuts on investment in active transport, but only 16% on roading, is incredibly disappointing. If we are serious about tackling emissions, that means we need to create a low-carbon transport network. And right now, we seem to be prioritising the status quo over that. And more specifically, even setting aside the issue of climate change, this is incredibly disheartening for me personally because I'm a student and like many of my peers, we use public and active transport around Christchurch. So when we see our needs being deprioritised by the council in favour of roading, that's incredibly disappointing and doesn't seem to recognise our voices important. So we're really disappointed by that, but we think there are positive steps that can be taken. We want the council not just to consider whether they've got the balance between active and transport and roading or public transport and roading right, but also to consider what kind of low-cost measures they can take to support a transition to a low-carbon economy. And that's particularly important during this annual plan, but also moving forward as we move towards the long-term plan, that what steps can be taken within the regulatory framework or even what steps can be taken to adjust the balance of how revenue is earned in a way that reflects the social cost of emissions. For example, maybe tinkering with parking plans or with development contributions, where changes could be made in the revenue structure and the regulatory framework that incentivise people to create the kind of Christchurch we want to see, one that's thriving and sustainable, rather than entrenching a status quo. Because ultimately, if we continue to entrench the status quo, that will not last. Climate change will change how we live and we can be ready for that, we can work with that, or we can try and go back to a Christchurch that already wasn't sustainable even before the pandemic. So I really strongly urge the council to consider what steps can be taken to create a better future, not just a return to the status quo. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Tim?
Thank you. Is Generation Zero going to be the leaders in our seats in the future? When we open up and develop or look at developing land, whether it's irrelevant of the council, the local authority, whether it's in the Environment Council or County Council or City Council, it seems that one of the things that isn't involved in it is a comprehensive public transport system or plan. There's nothing anywhere that's really required to prove that there's that comprehensive public transport plan. Do you think that that is a key element to opening up any land for development, irrelevant where it is?
I think it's certainly true that we support making sure that the social costs of new development is considered and that includes if we need to build new public transport links to service this area, then that should be reflected in how we consider that application and what kind of contributions we might ask from the developer.
So you're saying that it wouldn't have to be a requirement, it's just that it would be a preference?
I think I would say that part of, we are not experts, so exactly how you frame that, I'm not sure. But we should definitely be considering that and that should have, there should either be costs if there isn't one or, as you say, a requirement.
Thank you very much.
James?
Okay. Kia ora Elliot. Look, you said that you questioned whether your voice is important. It's fantastic that you're here and also your presence. And as Tim has just alluded to, you're the generation that's going to take advantage of the things that we're putting in place now and the debt we're leaving for you. But it is really important that you're here, that you're articulate, you're energised. And what we need is more of you and your generation around the table. Because in time, as Tim says, you're going to be on this side of the table. So I encourage you to come back with more of your party, if you like, or your group and present to us. It's really interesting. And it gives me confidence. I'm happy.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are running slightly ahead, so I'll take another couple of very quick questions, one from Yanni, one from Aaron.
Oh yeah, thank you for the debutation. I just wanted to check in terms of public transport, is there two or three things that you think we should be doing right away that would make a difference to show that we were taking it seriously as a priority?
Yes. In public and active transport, I think number one thing you could do is look at all the projects that are being deferred and say, are there some low-cost projects that we can keep? You don't, some things are very expensive, some things are not. So the example of putting covered bus shelters in place is not. So I think really identifying which projects are the lowest cost that we can save a couple of would be a really good sign that you're committed to making public transport an integral part of our transport network.
Thank you. And finally, Aaron?
Yeah, so mine was a PT question as well. So the numbers seem to keep falling. I think pre-COVID we're at 2.5%, whereas pre-quake we were at 4%. We've spent tens, if not hundreds of millions of dollars on PT in that time, mostly in one facility, which I think is pretty awesome. But why are the numbers, in Gen Zero's opinion, why are those numbers kept dropping when we're putting more and more infrastructure in, bus lanes? Do you know?
I think my inclination would be to say, while we are putting more money in, I don't think we're at the scale we need. Because if you look at Auckland, which has invested more money than Christchurch, Auckland's public transport numbers keep rising. So I think that's very suggestive that if you create a world-class network, then people will come. I don't think Christchurch could be described as a world-class network at this point.
A lot of visitors do rate it. I know people from other cities around New Zealand that think Christchurch does have a really good service. And but that aside, is there key things that you believe should be being done that will get more people on buses? Because, I mean, the density of population is a really big one. That it's really hard for us, well, there's no city in the world with our density of population with a successful PT system. It just mathematically can't work. So what will get those people on there?
Well, I think, to counter that slightly, what I would say is the city council's current scheme in town seems to be to incentivise commuters to come in and park all day. And I don't think that's a particularly good use of our car parks. I think that that locks them up and means that businesses in the central city find it harder to bring customers in. So I think if you might change the way you look at parking to make it so commuters were incentivised to bring, commuters were incentivised to use public transport to get into town. And then that would make space for businesses and it would make things better for the environment as well. So I think that's a real double win that could be made quite easily.
And one final, final question from Sarah.
Would it be fair to say that, because you mentioned the tinkering, that what you're asking for is transformation rather than tinkering and to do it quickly?
We would absolutely like to see transformation, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks very much indeed for your submission and thanks for your answer to questions as well. It's great. Thanks for joining us. So Leanne Watson not here. So have we got Justin Periam here?
Somebody, can we get someone to give Leanne a call, see what she's doing? We might need to reschedule. Yep.
All right, Justin, thank you for joining us.
Kia ora everyone. Hope you're all going well and surviving today. It's actually nice to be here not missing anything outside. It's miserable. My name's Justin Periam. I'm principal at Northcote Primary School in north of Christchurch. I have some familiar faces here as well from Papanui Ward. I just actually wanted to come along and support the council in their Strengthen Communities Fund proposal to increase the funding for that. And I feel very privileged. I've been at Northcote School for nearly three years now and had the opportunity to work with a number of these organisations in the community. For example, Papanui Youth Development, Papanui Baptist, Northgate. And they make a huge impact on the community. And in terms of my role as a principal, I certainly could not be able to do my role without their support. And that extends to the support from the local council ward as well, who have been very supportive of the Northcote community. So yeah, best ward in town, obviously. But it's the little things that, like the children of Christchurch, of which I have two daughters who are currently at Papanui High, who unfortunately are going through a tragic time at the moment after a student's committed suicide on Friday. Our kids have been to Hellenbeck in the last 10 years. And I was reading and I didn't hear, but there was an article recently about a principal from Linwood Ave talking about the amount of trauma our children have been through in 10 years is comparable to what adults wouldn't even go through that much in a lifetime. And I think of my own children in that breed and how I've had to have counselling for my daughters have had counselling just through the trauma that they've faced and especially with the shootings last year at Papanui High where they were both at the time. These organisations make a real difference because children can't learn if they aren't in a safe place. And that means emotionally, socially, their whole wellbeing. Children can't learn if they're hungry. Children can't learn if they're scared. And a lot of these organisations and the opportunities they offer help us provide those circumstances for the children. I mean, we have a breakfast club at school that is run through a combination of Te Oraho and Papanui Baptist and other churches. We'll feed up to 50 children a morning. So that's a lot of children we're feeding. We run a free home rec club. We have a lot of volunteers who come in and do reading mileage. And that's all organised through these community organisations. So while the funding might be employing one person, that person then coordinating up to 20, 30 other people to be able to come and actually work in the community and to build that community engagement. The last thing is, the one thing I love about Christchurch, having been a Southender at heart, and I'll never support Canterbury, but that's another thing, is the collaboration that I see going on. It's not a competition between these support agencies. It's we are doing things with Kaiaunga Order, working with Northgate Church Trust to do gardening programmes and we provide the venue. So there's that collaboration that's going on that I've never seen. I've been in teaching 23 years, never seen it before. So it is such a special mechanism that's happening. And I want to applaud you all for making that decision to increase the funding for the next annual plan. And I'm quite happy to pay a little bit more rates if we can do that. So yeah, thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you very much indeed for taking the time to make your submission this morning. Thank you.
You're welcome. Enjoy the rest of your day, everyone.
Thank you. Leanne, good afternoon. You made it. We were about to send out a search party. Now, thank you for joining us and your timing actually has turned out to be perfect. So looking forward to hearing from you.
The fact that I'm puffing because I had to race up two oops of stairs, so apologies. I was expecting to be able to sit there for a couple of minutes at least to catch my breath. Great. So you want me to start?
Yes, please.
Fantastic. Well, look, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to outline some of the key points in our submission. And I appreciate that you don't have that in front of you yet because it's yet been finalised. So we'll hopefully have that through to you by the end of the week. So at the start of this year, no one could obviously have predicted the immense impact that COVID-19 would have on the way of our life and the ability to conduct business. We currently find ourselves in the middle of a 100-year pandemic with our lives turned upside down in the space of a few months as we all continue to navigate an evolving environment without a blueprint and often at very short notice. While the local business community has responded to this unprecedented situation with agility and speed, it is also essential that the council acts in the same way to respond quickly to what is a very different new normal that we are all facing. It's also very important to recognise that for many businesses, there is still a very long road ahead of significant impact and disruption, which will require ongoing support and assistance to ensure these businesses not only survive, but recover and reposition themselves as the future becomes clearer. We are pleased that the council has reviewed and reworked its original draft annual plan released in February. We also appreciate that there is a delicate balance between the investment needed for the city in terms of capital projects and infrastructure and reducing the cost to ratepayers. While we, like many ratepayers, would have welcomed a 0% rates increase based on the analysis presented, we agree with the council that it appears a 0% rates increase would impact on the services and the key capital projects the council would be able to deliver. In particular, we appreciate the council's acknowledgement of the obligation to local business around the delivery of the Metro Sports Facility and the multi-use arena, which will make a significant difference to many central city businesses that were already struggling pre-COVID-19. Also that the knock-on effect of more delays would be significant and potentially a lot more costly in the long run. It would also not align with the central government's key focus on ramping up infrastructure projects to support jobs and future employment. Therefore, our preference is to keep the rates increase low and we support the council's recommendation of option one. However, we would like to ask the question as to whether alternative funding options have been explored. As this could release more capital and keep rates in a debt at manageable level and would be a major help in financing new local infrastructure. If the timing is not right, as I appreciate, given the current economic condition is unlikely to be, we would like an assurance that this will remain on the table for periodic consideration moving forward. We'd also like to acknowledge the council's reduction in operational spending, which will be welcomed by the business community, given that many organisations across our city are also taking similar planning. Other key points in our submission will include a greater focus given to business and people attraction to increase the rate base and raise capital. Many of these points you've heard me say before. Greater communication and engagement with the local business community, including a stronger weighting given to business voice and decision-making. And a dedicated local procurement policy and stronger, more vocal leadership position on keeping it local. While councillors provide an important pipeline of work for construction and contracting companies with the key capital projects, I would ask if more can be done by council to support and encourage buying local through adjusting their procurement practices if needed. And an opportunity for the council to take a very vocal national leadership position on this, challenging every other council across New Zealand to also prioritise local procurement. We'd also like to see appropriate resourcing and increased support for activation and city promotion, prioritisation and greater support for businesses and developers in the central city, and a commitment by council to becoming an enabler for business with a focus on streamlining processes and minimising compliance costs. We are aware of the challenges we're all facing in responding to the COVID-19 environment, especially as we are already in the process of rebuilding and regenerating after the Canterbury earthquakes, not something that we speak of often outside of the city now, which is the wrong thing to do, but it's a reality for all of us. We are also aware that globally, we are very much in the early days of a severe economic recession, which will continue to impact our city's future. To mitigate the impact, we believe local government needs to continue to work closely with and support the local business community to ensure a team of over half a million is able to not only survive but thrive in the future. As it's not just the financial livelihood, of course, of our community that this will help, it's also the mental health of those around us. And as we know, that regular employment plays a key role in overall wellbeing of our community and role modelling for future generations. As the home and voice of Canterbury Business, we appreciate the opportunity to continue to work alongside all of you, the CEO and also the mayor. Thank you for your time. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Other questions? Sarah?
Thank you. Two quick questions. One on the local procurement, which is clearly something that's very topical at the moment. Sometimes that costs a little bit more, so has an impact on rates in that way. Is that worth it?
I think absolutely, because I think we have to question whether or not the opportunity cost of not supporting our local business community. If our local business community fail, then actually that has an impact on our overall rates. So our business community are a big provider of income for the council through the rates. So it's really important that we explore all avenues. Now, at times, of course, you know, they have to be competitive, but if it costs marginally more, I think we need to look at the big picture at the same time.
That's great. And with that's, we've got both the capital and the operational. And you're very keen for the capital stuff to keep going. The operational, you've congratulated us on our cuts, but actually the operational expenditure is often job-related as well. Little things that people have talked about, like the pot plants, that's actually someone's job coming in and maintaining those. And what way do you see that as being related to that employment thing?
Yeah, and look, that's a really challenging situation because I absolutely appreciate that if, you know, if you are employing someone specifically to clean the plants within the building, I would like to think that that person can be maybe put to another use inside the organisation. Or if it's a contractor, then maybe that contractor, you know, provides a different service.
But then we're not saving the OpEx?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And look, I fully appreciate it is a balancing act. I get that. But I think if you've been able to explore and identify some cost savings, like every other organisation is doing across the city and across New Zealand, I think that's, you know, what I would like to see is to make sure that those cost savings can continue where possible, appreciating that there is a fine balance.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. I'll take two really quick questions, one from Pauline, one from Yanni. Pauline?
Yeah, thanks, Leanne. You say that you support an option of a 0% rates increase?
No, no, I support the recommendation that the council have made, yes.
Okay, so that's effectively, we've had another submitter today pointing out that if you take inflation into account, that's effectively zero. So which makes it probably more challenging to have a, more likely to have a higher increase next LTP or next year. So would you not therefore perhaps be looking more to support a higher increase this year?
Look, I think the current pain that, you know, the business community are going through right now, we have to take that into account. Now, what we don't want, I mean, one of the reasons we didn't support a zero rates increase and go against the council's recommendation is we fully appreciate that that will mean an even bigger jump next year. We would far rather see small incremental increases, if we have to have increases, as opposed to a zero this year and a massive jump next year. Because there is no doubt that next year, we are not going to be through COVID. You know, for many of our businesses and particularly for some of our sectors, until the borders reopen, this pain is going to be around for a very, very long time. So we have to do all that we can to balance that and support businesses. So I think it's about, you know, the recommendation, yeah, it probably sits more comfortably where it is in terms of the recommendation that the council have put forward. I did consider the second option as well. But yeah, I think right now, at this current moment, I think the recommendation that the council has made is...
You do recognise the council's place as an economic driver?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And then really quickly, Yanni?
I just wondered if the chamber had any view on the prioritisation of spending in the central city versus support for the suburbs in terms of local business activity?
You're talking specifically about business activity?
Yeah, I mean, we've heard some submitters today, I guess, concerned at the high cost of some very expensive projects in the central city while businesses in the suburbs are struggling.
Sure. And look, you know, there is always that balance again of supporting businesses across our whole community. What we do know is in order to have a vibrant city, you need to have a vibrant heart. You know, there's good research, and I know all of you know that. And we also know that many businesses that have invested significant amounts of money in the central city did so on the basis that there would be many anchor projects up and running now. Some of those are well and truly up and running, some of them are yet to be delivered upon. So I think it's really important that we make sure that the businesses that have invested in the central city, you know, the central city is looking really positive. We want to retain those businesses in the central city because we know if we lose them, it's going to be twice as hard to get them back. It's been hard enough to attract them in the first place. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't be supporting businesses in the suburbs as well, but I think the central city plays a different part in the city as a whole.
Great. Thank you very much indeed for some really considered comments this morning, and we look forward to your written submission landing later in the week. Thank you very much indeed.
It's a bit later than normal, but it's just a busy time.
It's a very unusual time. Thank you very much indeed. Thank you. All right, so that brings us to the end of today's hearing session. So I now need to adjourn the meeting until 9:30 AM on Wednesday, the 24th of June, so that's tomorrow. I would like people just to remain just for another couple of minutes. We've got John Felsell here, who's just going to make a couple of comments around how we want to deal with any matters arising coming out of the submissions that we're hearing. Yes, we do. Right. Would that work for people to do that? Just keep going? Yeah, that sounds good. All right, why don't we hear from John now? And then we'll take literally just five minutes while we get staff here for the briefing, and then we can run that, and it just means that we're not taking an hour out and coming back at 2 o'clock. Does that generally work for people? Yeah, I mean, yeah, all right, great. So John, do you want to just? Yeah, so let's deal with that now as well.
So what we need is we need essentially something like that that tells us what page they're on and what document they're in. And all of the documents need to be on one, in one area because we've got briefings for the annual plan are under the council briefing section, annual plan. And you've got the annual plan stuff is broken up into different groups. You actually need a headline submissions, and then you need a folder called submissions, and you need something that tells you where to find them because there is no, there's no link point. You can't, you know, search the document for the actual...